Okay. Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. The time is 5:01. And I am calling the Monroe County Council Meeting to order. And here in the NatU Hill Room, we have councilors present. Liz Fidal, Kate Wiltz, Peter Iverson, and David Henry. And next, councilor, let me also rephrase. Councilors Trent Decker actually will be joining us a little bit later. And not sure if Counselor Marty Huck will be attended virtually or online, but hopefully we'll get a chance to see her. But nonetheless, we are getting ready to do the business because we have a quorum. And all those that are able to stand, please stand with me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to all. All of you, guys. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um, thank you. And next up, we are at item number three, which is the adoption of tonight's agenda. And looking to my colleagues here to see if we got some adoptions or any amendments. Looks like I have a couple of notes here for us to amend. Item 8D, which is the Health Department to include the creation of a new account line, 10111 Environmental Health Specialist General Fund, and 1161-0000 Local Public Health Services. And we need to add items 14A, which is the Approval Ordinance 2025-14, which is readoption procedures for awarding community service grants. And item, or we're going to add item 4B, which is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to amend the 2024 Collaborative Grant Application for My Sister's Closet and renumber the subsequent items on tonight's agenda accordingly. So again, a couple of few things for those that might not have caught it. Adding, amending item 8D, which is the Health Department for, to include a new creation line. And then we're going to add 14A and 14B. And it has something to do with the Sophia Travis Grant Committee and to amend the 2024 Collaborative Grant Application for My Sister's Closet. So looking around, does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. And since we don't have anybody virtually that's joining us, and since we have a quorum here that's present, we can do this by voice vote. So all those in favor of amending tonight's agenda or approving tonight's agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Motion is adopted for tonight's agenda to be amended. All right. Now we are up at item number four, which is our public comment. And so these are usually for, well, not usually, they are for items not on the agenda. So if we have members of the public that are here that would like to express what they feel, you can make a public comment here at the podium here at the NatU Hill Room. You'll have three minutes and you'll also see the timer on the monitors here. So TSD will help us with that. And anybody attending virtually, you also can make a public comment for items not on the agenda. But you can do that by raising your hand. And looks like we got somebody here at the podium. So after you sign in, you'll have three minutes and you can go ahead and just state your name.
Hi, my name is Matthew Austin. I am on the CAC, the Vice Chair of the CAC with the Waste Reduction District. I'm also a Commissioner on the Commission on Sustainability. And I know Councilmember Wiltz is aware of this. At the Waste Reduction District, we just got a funding agreement for a community and festival food waste pilot project, where we will be fermenting food waste in buckets. And we've partnered with the Taste of Bloomington as well as the Will Detmer Community Gardens. And we'll be taking all the food waste created at that festival to the Will Detmer. And that's going to turn into soil really, really, really fast. In about three months, it'll turn into soil. And you could put everything, meat, bones, dairy, everything can go in that. So my point in saying this is My Sister's nonprofit Garden Quest is piloting this. We've been doing a neighborhood pilot for about two and a half years already. And with just 20 families, we've kept 6,000 pounds of food waste out of the landfill. So our ultimate goal is to create a culture shift within the county. And so we're going to have a try before you buy it portion of the program in which residents will have the opportunity to adopt two buckets in which they will learn the process over four months. And after that point, they will give those buckets back for other residents to try it. And those residents that have tried it will then end up either deciding to buy their own buckets or not. So we're trying to let everybody know that this is happening because for a culture shift to happen, everybody's got to know. So hopefully at some point in time, we'll get more marketing and advertising out there. But I know Councilmember Iverson, we spoke about this. And if there's any way to let your constituents know, we'll be having some sort of signup so that residents can apply for the try before you buy. But ultimately, this is just another step in the process. Ultimately, we'll be asking for entities larger than My Sister's nonprofit to start applying for grants from item federally, so on and so forth, so we can expand this to a much larger reach. Our ultimate goal is to take care of the entire county. It's not going to happen just through Bokashi. I also set up a field trip to Caldwell's, Inc. They can, they could take all of Monroe County's food waste on a large scale. So we already had MCCSC is interested. We had the Waste Reduction District's interested. We're starting to work on IU. And so we just need more stakeholders. They could take the large bulk, but the Bokashi specifically for residential. So we're working on both ends. And we just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. And if there's any help that you can give, we would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask a question?
Usually during public comment, we don't, but if you had a quick question.
I just wanted to know maybe if you were doing a press release to get the county to know about it.
Um, no, we have a lot of irons in the fire. We have multiple different pilots going on right now. And we have an urban farm. But that, that will be in the plan with the Taste being August 2nd. I am going to be, we are going to be applying through BCAWS for another grant to do a second festival and to open this up to city members as well. But yes, a press release would be a great idea. Thank you.
Welcome. All right. Any other audience members or those that are watching virtually would like to make public comment for items not on the agenda? Again, you can come to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room. And seeing no takers, we will move on. So again, thank you for that comment. That was really interesting. Okay. Next up is department, yeah, excuse me. Department update for items, again, not on the agenda. This is the portion where county departments can come here to the lectern and the public can know what is happening, what's going on. And you have 10 minutes per department. So if we have anybody, and it looks like we got somebody, go ahead and sign in and state your name and go for it.
Hear me now. Okay. Melanie Vestlage. So good evening, Monroe County Councilors. My name is Melanie Vestlage, and I'm the new Prevention Coordinator at Youth Services Bureau, where I'm also in leadership for building a thriving compassionate community, or BTCC, which is a community subcommittee that's housed under YSB. A lot of letters. I'm here tonight to share that YSB and BTCC are planning and coordinating the 10th Annual Monroe County Childhood Condition Summit, also known as MC3. And it will be held on Thursday, November 13th, at the Monroe Convention Center in downtown Bloomington. The theme this year is "A Decade of Growth Empowering Youth, Strengthening Our Village." The MC3 was spearheaded by the Honorable Judge Galvin, and we are so appreciative of his foresight and the importance of bringing together stakeholders to work intentionally to improve the conditions in Monroe County. So over the past decade, the summit has been guided by the concept that what surrounds us shapes us. Children and youth are shaped by the relationships that they're a part of, the neighborhoods that they live in, and the places that they're playing, and the policies and the practices that are developed by the organizations and institutions with which their families interact. The CDC has developed a framework called the Essentials for Childhood, which is intended for communities who are committed to the positive development of children and families. When children have access to safe, stable nurturing relationships and environments, they're more likely to thrive. And thriving children are more likely to grow into thriving adults. So what we do as a community and in our community is affecting those conditions. So this year, we're looking back at 10 years of exploring what has shaped childhood conditions in Monroe County and reviewing what we've been able to improve through intentional work across sectors. We're exploring practical strategies for moving forward. So in the next 10 years, how can we work to collectively, at the interpersonal, the organizational, the policy and the community level, to create a resilient and empowered community where youth and families thrive? So you're in a unique position in the community to impact some of these strategies and to help improve the well-being of our community. Monroe County has increased access to parental leave and postpartum services through a partnership with Tandem for county employees, boards and commissions like Sophia Travis, Opuit Settlement. They financially support organizations that are improving systems and structures to support caregivers and families and young people directly. You make decisions on funding for infrastructure like parks and roads. And all of these impact the way that families engage in the community. So we really appreciate your spirit of collaboration and the way that you're working with our neighbors. So formally, you are invited to join the MC3 Summit on November 13th as decision makers in Monroe County Council or as your roles as community members, as parents, as educators, and other folks that are invested in creating conditions that support young people and families in Monroe County. This invitation is also extended to the general public. So anyone in the room, we aim to keep the cost low, as low as possible in the interest of accessibility. So if you or any member of the public is interested or has questions, you can contact me at mvhslage@co.munro.in.us or the network email, which is btccbloomington@gmail.com. You can also call me at 812-335-7276, my office line, if that's easier. If you'd like to stay up to date on the summit, including workshop selection, registration links, or other things like that, you can sign up for the BTCC newsletter. You can go to tinyurl.com/newsletter-btcc or email me directly or let me know now. And then speaking of updates, we're also taking proposals for sessions. So the RFP will close on Monday, June 23rd at 11:59 PM. So if you, as a member of council, or anyone listening as a member of the public, would like to submit a proposal, you can call me, you can email me. You can also visit tinyurl.com/2025mc3rfp. Just thank you so much for your support of YSB. I do have little cards if you'd like them, and I'm happy to answer any questions too.
Thank you. Looking to my colleagues to see if anybody has any questions.
Is it all day?
Uh, yes, it'll be all day.
Thanks.
Yeah. If I can do this.
And thank you for that. It's important. I know my daughter was able to present some years ago, so this is really good. Thank you. All right. Um, any other departments that would like to give a departmental update for items not on the agenda? Again, if you are virtual, you can raise your hand via Teams or you can come here to the lectern here in NatU Hill Room. None, but also seeing that Counselor Trent Decker has joined the crew. Thank you very much. We will move on. So we will move on to item number six, which is the consent agenda items.
Council, I move to approve the following consent agenda item for May 13th. The probation department's request in Fund 9122-0000 JDAI Coordination Grant for a category transfer of $2,400 from the Supplies category to the Services category. Start it.
All right. We got a motion on in a second. Any discussion from council on the items presented? All right. Seeing none. If there is any public comment on this particular item, please, again, raise your hand via Teams or come to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room. And they'll see none. And again, we don't have any councilors virtually. Oh, no. Yes, we do. I see it looks like Counselor Huck is virtual. So because we have a member attended virtually, we will need for Counselor Huck to turn our camera on so she can participate in the vote. And then may we please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Huck?
Okay. I'll skip for a minute.
Thank you. Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, six to one.
Okay.
Or six to zero, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up, item number seven, which is the Board of Commissioners, from the Board of Commissioners.
Council, as a reminder, this item was tabled from the April 22nd council meeting. I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request in Fund 94914-0000 Showers Building Operating Fund, the creation of Account Line 30006 Contractual, and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $2,500 in the Services category.
Got a motion? Need a second?
A second.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Someone did second.
Oh, no. That's what we're looking for. No, but we got a motion and a second. All right. And we got, also have Mr. Jeff Cockrell from Legal. Since this was tabled from our previous meeting, I just wanted to kind of take the liberty because a lot of the questions that it seemed like council had was, what is this? I know I definitely had it, and I know Ms. Purdy wasn't able to answer all the questions and defer to you. So since you're here, would you please enlighten us and the public about this corporation?
Well, yes. And I think this corporation was formed when the, we built the original Justice Building, the Charlotte Zitlow Justice Center. Its purpose is to handle the debt structure so that we do not run afoul of the constitutional debt limit, which is essentially 2% of the assessed value. What this group did for that and why we want to maintain it is because we have a fairly large building project on the near horizon that we really want, the new justice facility at North Park. And so utilizing this for that debt arrangement is kind of what we want to do so that if it's not this building corporation, it'll have to be a building corporation because of constitutional debt limit ideas. This is one that has been around, has handled these kinds of things. And so instead of reforming a corporation, going through the IRS process of getting it designated 501(c)(3) and going through all those things, we decided, and I think this decision happened around the pandemic, maybe a little before, just to keep it going because that's when we really started the conversation of, hey, we're going to need a new facility. And so we need a, we're going to need this organization around or an organization like this in order to keep that going. So that's what this is for. It's to keep that going so that when we do issue debt, we have a building corporation to run the lease purchase idea through. And its sole purpose is to keep us from running afoul of a constitutional debt limit.
Okay. Thank you. And I see we got some questions, and I see Counselor Huck had her hand up. Just real quick, I'll just kind of jump in for a second. So this is almost like, in my mind, I'm thinking like this is almost like the CIB to like.
It, no. It.
The same concept.
Well, when we're, when we, the Convention Center is a perfect example. When we, when that was formed and when we gave the property to the CIB, it then got transferred to the city to be placed into a building corporation so that they could issue the debt for that project and not run afoul of the debt, constitute debt, debt limitations. We also had a building corporation for the Convention Center that once we paid the debt off, I think earlier this year, late last year, that corporation kind of fell off and is, no longer had a purpose. So we know, we no longer have a relationship with them. This group would have done that except we knew we had this other big project that fell within their scope of what they were formed for. I.e., the, the long acronym includes jail and government offices, which is essentially what the current Zitlow Justice Center is and essentially is what we're looking at doing in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Huck?
Yes. A question, and it's a follow-up from something that Mr. Cockrell and I discussed the other day, having to do with a change in the legislation that indicated we could not use more than 25% to pledge toward any debt with, having to do with our economic development. Have you, do you have any updates on that for us?
Well, I mean, not a really good update, but I did meet with our Financial Solutions Group, the financial advisor who's doing our, working for the council with the Long Term Finance Committee. And we were discussing, amongst other things, how to kind of get this discussion going with the state legislatures and, and trying to figure out where all the pressure points are. We know of two. One is that 25% of the income tax that we can, that we can do pledged towards debt at this point in time. And the other one is, after all the income tax exchanges, it requires a reauthorization annually of that income tax. And so there is some concern from, from financial advisors, and rightfully so, that is that going to diminish the ability to market any kind of lending because of an annual requirement to make sure that they can still, we can still make those bond payments, right? So they, that, anytime you add a moving part to these things, it, it makes people a little, it adds more risk to the, to the agreement, right? It adds more, more risk to the debt and things like that. So those are two of the things that we want to make sure that the state's aware of and the concerns that hopefully they can solve and, and if they see fit, correct those issues.
And as a follow-up, I think when we first started talking about what we were going to do about how to finance the jail project, that was before we knew that it was going to have to literally be coming out of any operating money because all of that's going to be, all of those income taxes are going to come together into one operating fund for, for the county. And so that, that also needs to be looked at by the long-term finance people as to exactly how much of that total that's going to be using once we switch over, what, in 2028, whatever year that is. So there's a lot to be discussed with that for certain.
Counselor Huck, did anything? Never mind. I, I was, I was a little confused because we were talking about the, the corporation here. And so I wasn't sure if you wanted to add on to anything like that or.
Right. It absolutely is a part of, of why we have the corporation. It all works together. We had the same sort of corporation when we built our present jail. And so we worked with them for years. So I know how it works. But we also have to figure out how we're going to address our new legislation.
All right. Um, I will go here to my right, starting with, I'll just go down the slow train line. Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Cockrell, thank you. Just some basic questions because I think we had just some basic questions that, when this came up last time that, so I'm just going to ask basic questions. So the, the current Corporation Board, you mentioned it was kept going or we're keeping it going. When was the debt retired on the previous facility?
I want to say that that debt was retired. It, it was retired a while ago. I think we also utilized this, or this organization when we bought the showers building. And that would have been retired, you know, I think in 2018, I want to say.
I guess I'm just trying to understand like the, if, you know, if a board does its work and it retires the debt service and there's nothing to manage at that point, you know, what keeps something like this on a warm base? Because it feels like, pardon the analogy, it's like we're pulling it off the shelf after it's been sitting there a while. But is that a, shouldn't have this been disbanded once the debt service and the other debt service was taken care of?
Well, I think in 2018, when, I think we had begun the investigation of, one, we were, we're talking about the Convention Center. And two, we were also talking about a, a new justice jail slash justice facility at that time. Now, granted, at that time, if we knew that we would be sitting in 2025 and, and nothing is going, we might have made, or at least looked at it a little differently. I'm not sure we would have made a different decision. But certainly, that was all part and parcel as to why at that stage, we decided, hey, it's probably a great idea to keep this going because we anticipate that being, coming up shortly.
Yeah, I just have three short questions. I'll move on. So the, it was kind of reauthorized, you mentioned, around the pandemic. I, I don't know if that's the right word, but you said it would kind of reauthorize the activity?
I think what happened is in, around the pandemic, they, they needed funding to keep going, right? So they, much like this, we, we gave them, I think around this same dollar figure amount. Before that, they had, they still had funding internally to keep going. And then at that point in time, they're like, hey, what do you want us to do? Do you want us to stick around or what are we going to do? And then we knew that we had been talking with the Indiana Civil Liberties Union, and we knew that, that there was momentum for this. I think if the, for, and we, we actually went to city planning, I think in '21, to kind of get a, get a site going. So at that point in time, it, it looked like it, we were right around the corner of needing them to, to do their job.
Yeah, my questions aren't really about the, the need for it. I understand the need for the holding. I'll combine my last question into two. So who appoints the board and how long is their term?
They are self-appointed, which means that they, they are, they are a standalone corporation. Traditionally, what happens with the appointments are, they ask the county, hey, we have an opening. We want to, who, who, who would you like to see in those positions? Also, as we've talked over time, you know, the members are will, are serving, feel like they're serving at the pleasure of the county. And so if we looked at the, at the membership and we thought, hey, you know, we'd really like this expertise on there that's not already on that board, they're willing to work with us to, to accomplish who's on it. But they, they are their own corporation. They make their own appointments and their appointments.
You say they are assuming the Board of Commissioners when?
No, no, the, the building corporation. The building corporation is a standalone corporation.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam President.
Looking to my left here. Anybody got questions? I see faces that look like they might have questions.
I.
I know I have one, but you can go ahead.
I have, I just need more clarity on, on, I guess, how this works because it's a standalone commission that only exists to do this one, you know, to serve Monroe County government. And the board is not appointed by anyone in Monroe County government?
Correct.
Why?
Well, and I, I think I am not a bond counsel to take everything I'm about to say with a grain of salt.
Sure.
But in order for us to get around a constitutional debt limit, we have to have a lease arrangement with an outside entity, right? And so this is that outside entity. We can't have that lease arrangement with an internal county organization, and it still meets, satisfies the statutory allowance for it. I, I know that doesn't make a lot of sense, but essentially it is, you can't lease to yourself and then, and then tell the state government, we are, we are not having that debt per the Constitution when the statute that says you can do this mechanism says you have to use this type of organization.
May I continue? So this type of organization, does that include theoretically organizations that might exist already or external to just serving our debt, but maybe do this as a thing as, for others?
I can't, never seen it done that way. I've never seen a building corporation take on more than one entity's projects. on more than one entities projects, right? I mean, I remember when we were looking at the convention center, I said, hey, we're paying off our debt. We have this building corporation already set up. If you guys want to use it, I think that would be a great use of that. And, and the city wanted to have one that, that was their own making and all that. A lot of it has to do with, the corporation has bylaws and things like that, which explain what the mission and the purpose of that organization is. And so this, the, the one we're talking about tonight has the, its original purpose and mission was, coincides really well with what we're intending it to use for. So it, it, it would be a little unusual for a building corporation to kind of serve two different units and still have that same mission and bylaws. I'm not saying it couldn't happen. I just never seen it.
So you said that this, the building corporation exists so that we, I mean, you're, you're saying get around, but we're going to exceed, if we counted the debt, it would exceed a limit that's been placed on us. So this is a way of getting more credit through kind of using someone else's credit. Is that?
I don't, it's not really credit. When the-
Okay, bonding capacity.
We're, we're not utilizing any of their credit. I mean, every time, every decision that's made on setting the interest rate, setting the, you know, all those things, am I going to bid on this, is based upon our demonstration of being able to pay it off. It's got nothing to do with the building corporation's demonstration paying it off, right? So, so they're, they're looking at us. The, the state constitution says 2% essentially. And then there's a statute that lowers that, I think to 1% or 2/3 of a percent. And then, but then in that, there, there also says, hey, but if you do this process, it doesn't count as debt in the, in the eyes of our state constitutional debt limit, right? That, that is, and, and I know that doesn't make sense. It took me a while when they first said it to, to just kind of, to, to kind of realize what's going on.
So it does, but, but, but the paying off of the debt through this corporation is part of what's considered for our credit rating, our ability to bond across other things, even though it is also allowing us to bond, bond for more than we would otherwise?
Well, I think the bond for more, I want to be clear, because there are two different ways to think of bond for more. One would be like if I went to the, the bank for my, with my personal finances and want to buy a house, the bank is going to say, I will loan you X amount, right? This building corporation doesn't have anything to do with the bank saying, I will loan you X amount. This building corporation would be like if I went to a bank and they said, since you are just you, we're only going to let you borrow half of what we would normally let it. But if you utilized somebody else, and again, I, I realize this is a hard analogy because it doesn't happen. If you utilize someone else, then we'll, we'll go ahead and loan you that full amount, right? It's, it's got everything to do with, with state requirements as opposed to what the credit worthiness is of the person making or trying to get the loan.
So I have a question now.
Go for it.
So I wonder if you could give us an example of some other board or entity that self appoints itself in the county?
I don't think there is one.
Swindon, no, thanks. Mr. Decker.
So let me try to sum up what I think I hear you saying on this. And it is hard to get head or, the head around this because of the state constitution, particularly facing counties in combination with state law, which takes the debt threshold from 2% down to 1%, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
This organization has been used since the eighties. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
They've been used since the eighties to assist the county in more lawfully managing building space and needs around a, another constitutional requirement, which is justice and jail and the, everything that goes in there. Am I summarizing this right?
I, I think you're doing a much better job than I did.
Well, that's about probably where it ends. Do you know examples of another county that did something similar to this or city or anything?
Well, I think the city has done it recently with the convention center. I would be surprised if there's any county out there that hasn't utilized a building corporation in their operations. I think anytime you build a, a new facility of any real size, you're, you're going to be looking at this.
So basically, in the eighties, the county, our predecessors, were innovative in trying to figure out a way to get their job done and not let the state rules that we talk a lot about eat the other state rules that require them to do their job. Am I saying that right?
Yes, I think so.
All right. And then the board, this board, and again, I always get this name, Monroe County Jail Law Enforcement Governmental Space Building Corporation. That board has bylaws that they operate by, right?
Correct.
Okay. I, I understand all this a little bit better. And I've heard it in reference over the years for this convention center and other things to get operations done. I do hear comments from other counselors about, I, I never really had thought much about the board, where you get the board from. And given that boards can change their bylaws, right? Probably haven't felt a need, but probably, you know, these things come up. Probably could look at how that process works for future iterations. But we are routinely seeing where state requirement X and state requirement Y sometimes have areas like this. I think that's it for my questions. I don't know if you have anything to say to that.
Well, and I, and I think one of the other things to remember is they're, they don't act in a vacuum. Like anything that we do with them will have a lease agreement as part of it. And it will, it will spell out a lot of the, it'll spell out a lot of the things. There is not a whole lot of discretion in this board either, right? They, they, they aren't, the, the original board had a lot more discretion because the original project, i.e. the Charlatz Zitlow Center, included the city police department and included some city, city functions. So at that time, part of this board's duty, and it was in, built into the lease, lease purchase agreement, was to help manage how all those groups work together, right? So I, I would expect our, this, the lease agreement for this new facility to be, to be significantly different because we won't have to account for that kind of interaction.
The, and ultimately kind of closing the loop, if us, and I'll throw out some things, you tell me if I've got this right. If a citizen of Monroe County were disappointed with how a county, this county was funding the operations in that jail or justice building, they could fire me or one of these people. If they're unhappy with the way the buildings were being managed, including the one we're in, they could fire a commissioner and hire a new one. If they're unhappy with the way prisoner conditions were maintained, they could fire the sheriff. And if they didn't like how someone was prosecuting them, they could fire the prosecutor, right?
Correct.
So while this board is a little bit different on holding the debt, the public facing entities are still in time. Okay. All right. I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. So I was a little like, I was writing notes down. Then when I heard it was self-appointed, I kind of did a moment and it looks like some of the audience members did too. Um, my question, so the self-appointed, is that, so you're saying is that something in state statute that allows this corporation to self-appoint?
I, I think any, any corporation in the state decides who's on its board, right? It's an internal thing. I, and I, and I think I would just point out that I think since I've started working here, there has been turnover in that board. And every time there was turnover, their first question was county, who would you like to see appointed there? And that question was always directed at the, the county commissioners, right? So I'm, I, I understand why, why this body would maybe not know about that. But every time that happened, it was a request to the county commissioners, typically with, with at least one or two names, say, are you comfortable with this person or that? And that's how the replacements have always occurred. Now, that's, that's not in any law or any statute, but that's how it's always operated.
And so the other question that I had, and looking at the packet, I was when, like, so obviously this is something that we have to have when we talk about, you know, the building of things, well, a jail facility and a justice facility. I saw like back in 1983, the year I was born, that that happened. But in the packet, my confusion is, commission or it says on page 24, the accounts payable voucher, corporate existence for a minimum of five years ended December 31st, 2022. So I was trying to look at also in the packet and see, I guess, when did it rise up again to put itself back in motion? Because, I mean, according to this, it ended in 22 and now we're saying that it's existing again. So I, I, I just had a question about that.
Well, and I don't have 24 in front of me, but what I believe that it is, is whenever that, that five-year period is when I was talking about how we made a decision to, to re-up them, to keep them going. I think the funding that was involved in that was supposed to go until 2022. Now they've managed to make it another year or so before coming to ask us for more, for more funding. So I think the corporation itself is governed, is, is gone through by the Secretary of State of the state of Indiana. It's active. And, and so I think that's probably what page 24 is referencing is that previous extension of a period of time to keep this corporation going.
The other thing is my understanding and looking at it, they usually meet around July. So it's a one, a year type of thing?
Well, right now, it would be once a year. It, it wants, if we had more activity, I would, I would suggest that the next year or, and next couple of years, they will probably have to meet much more often than once a year. But since they're, they, they don't have any active business, then right now they're meeting once a year.
Okay. And then the topic that is brought to us is like additional appropriations. The other question that I had is, I guess, who decided to give the board members $100 per board member? That's, and that's, I'm assuming per meeting? Like if they meet more, then it's $100 more, like every meeting?
I, I, I assume that that is the case. Although I can't say from any practical experience where I, I've been around where I thought they've met more than once a year. I, I can confirm that. I believe that goes back to the eighties.
Okay. Um, I think Counselor Henry had a question and then I'm gonna circle back to Counselor Wilt.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I think, I think that's where we're getting caught up, right? So I, I mean, we understand there needs to be a bond corporation to put out the proceeds or proceeds or collect the proceeds to start construction once we get there. I, this is, this is the challenge I'm having. So I have half the information. I don't have bylaws appoint me to how this incorporates. I, it seems like an organization perpetuity. It, it, we, they, the meeting minutes suggest they meet once a year, get paid $100 each to figure out who's paying the taxes that year. And then they adjourn until they have more work to do. And that seems to have been going on, well, without the information before us, well, since, for almost 40 years. And so when we started adding up 2,500 bucks every few years, you know, how much is going out from the county, I think that's the heartburn I have. I, I wish I had a little more information to work with here to understand the nature of what it is that we're paying for and at what point. I mean, I'm presuming that while the board can self-execute and, and, and fill roles and come back to the county and ask who they might want to sit there, other firms could obviously hold this corporation at some point, right? This particular firm, this LLC has been sitting on this for a while. I'm presuming others might be interested in being a bond counsel at some point. It's not really a question, but more of a comment where I'm just really wrapped up about how, like a lot of things that seem to happen in the county where we get, and this isn't a, a slight on anybody, we get about half the information and then ask to make a decision about it historically. I just need a lot more to work with here in terms of bylaws, code, to really grasp what we're talking about. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Wilt.
Is the $2,500 annually extent of the compensation that these folks receive from the county?
Well, I would say they don't get 2,500 annually from the county. They, they, this is, I mean, I, I think this is a payment that would represent more than one year's worth of expenses to them. So that would be one. And two, I think that when it's active and we have a lot of work to do, they may get a little bit more than that. Probably not annually, but enough to cover their, their legal fees and their taxes. I mean, they, they have to do taxes and they have to do legal fees. So there is some compensation built into the lease payment when we go through and make that arrangement.
So that, that money would go to their hired counsel? Or the, the board members are not the counsel or the accountant?
No.
That's somebody else?
They, they hire, they have to hire an accounting firm and they have, they have, clearly they have a legal representation as well.
Okay, so, um, how will we, how will we, and by we, I mean the public also, know when, what the compensation is, I guess, for, for these folks? If the activity ramps up, do you do, come back to us to appropriate more, more money for these folks? Like, because you're, we're anticipating that'll happen. I'm just wondering the process.
I guess typically, when the lease is in place, and this is part of the reason that, you know, they, they hadn't come to us for a while, when the lease is in place, it includes a stipend to help them with that funding. You know, when we did the original justice building, I think there were extra funds left over that they were overseers of in order to do some of the changes and keep the building up to date, primarily because we had that city-county blend. I think that was all, like, again, I wasn't around here in the eighties, but that was all part of the plan, is that this group would help with kind of making sure that the building stayed maintained to the point because you had the city and the county entities in it. Now, the city, the city didn't stay there very long, but that wasn't necessarily anticipated when it was all put together.
Okay. Other questions from council? Go on, once? Okay. Um, now we will move on to public comment for this particular item. If you have public comment, you can state your case and come to the lectern here in the Knight U-Hill room or raise your hand via teams. I'm not seeing any movement in the room or seeing hands raised online. And not seeing any movement in the room or seeing hands raised online. Michelle, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard.
I would like to, I know we're in a roll call. I would like to make a motion to, for us to do something with item seven different than what we're doing. Uh, hey, sorry.
Can you amend the motion?
Yes. Number one, and I'll try to say this as eloquently as I can, and I apologize for doing this in a roll call, but I, I thought there'd be another second here. I would like to move to hold item number seven, pending a request of the council that we could look at the corporation bylaws and last year's budget, if that's appropriate for council. And then I think we could review that to make potentially suggestions to make what seems to be something started with good intentions, but to have more public-facing things today.
Second.
Excuse me, since this is an additional appropriation, we have to assign it a day. So because it does have an additional appropriation, so you need to postpone it to a particular date.
Does the legislature under their rules, yeah, here we go again, another rule from on high, does it allow us to say for a date in the month of June? Can we be that vague or are they gonna be down here with Todd Rukida?
I think you could table it to a specific date, or you could table it indefinitely, and then it could just be added back to an agenda.
But it would have to be re-advertised.
I think the question that might be imperative to determining the date is, how quickly can Mr. Cockrell get us the bylaws and council have the opportunity to review?
Which is why, here, we've got a triple rule. We've got the rule of how you pay for things, you've got the rule of public meetings, and you've got the rule of everything else. So I, I can't give a specific date because I don't know, but I guess if we could get that next, in a, in a month?
And everybody in the week too, you guys?
Okay. Then I'll say next meeting, whatever date that is.
I think it's the May 27th meeting.
Okay, so, did I hear a second for that? Oh, okay. So we got a motion and a second to table this until May 27th, the day after Memorial Day. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the motion that was presented?
Madam President, yeah, I, just since we're doing audibles right now. I, I, I'm trying to figure out the code, but I think it's Title 36 dash 7.6 dash 4 dash 3, but it's in that, that's, I know I just rattled that off fast, but I, I, yeah, I think that, I, I think part of that is I just need to see the code where this lives for bonding generally to help understand that, plus the bylaws, plus how we got here. I, I want to see the code and what relates, but I've been Googling code up here for 20 minutes and, yeah, that's it.
All right. Anybody else have anything to say on the motion? Nope? Okay. Do we do a public comment on? Oh, go ahead.
I, I do want to make one comment on my motion, which I can do, right? All right. So my motion is made. Number one, I, when I was in Counselor Crossley's president chair, I always am trying to figure out how we do things and keep things going with the public-facing portion. The spirit of my motion is, is that we are not necessarily disrupting something that has served a fiscal purpose for some time, but try to fix it to have more of a public-facing component. I, and so I offer that comment verbally for those out there in the ether that might be of good assistance on this, who are tremendous, good public servants for the community in a lot of capacities and can probably help us figure that out. So I'm hopeful that we can do that and not break something that we may vitally need. So I'll be quiet.
So let me add something. So does this amendment cause this particular entity any duress, I'll say?
I, I don't, I, I, I will say I don't think so. I think that they have bills that they need to, that they, I think they have, the firm has run it and paid. And so I think the firm just wants paid back. It's part of this. But I don't think a couple, two more weeks is gonna make a big difference.
Counselor Wilt.
The letter in which they are requesting this amount is from last August. So now it will be nearly June, and we, and it is looking as though what they are asking for is payment for 2024 only. I just, this is so inefficient. It really, it makes my skin crawl. And if I'm reading this right, obviously we won't ask for this level of, of, or this amount of information next time. But, I mean, and so I guess that's, that's okay. But I just, I guess I just want to, you know, apologize to the good folks doing the work for the, that this has taken so long, and it looks as though it'll have to spin around to come right back if we want to stay on top of this or figure out new terms. But that's it. Thanks.
Counselor Hock.
Yes. When you're doing the homework to bring something back to us, I'd like to see where, what kind of funding is already sitting there that has not been spent down. I mean, are they setting on dollars now that they could use some of that? Or, or why are we being asked for additional dollars if there's dollars available? Or perhaps the commissioners might add another fund, so we're not doing an additional. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't want to support the creation, the recreation of this building corp, but we're supposed to be talking about the money. So that would be my question.
Fair point, Counselor Hock.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on the motion? All right. Michelle, may we please have, oh, sorry, public comment. No, I don't want to miss that. Anybody has any public comment on the motion as presented? Please come forward to the lectern here in the Night You Hill Room or raise your, raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
This is a roll call vote on the amended motion to table this item to the May 27th council meeting in order for council to receive information. Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hock.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Henry.
Yes.
Counselor Fidel.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous for the table.
Thank you. And we'll see you back on May 27th. Okay. Now we are moving on to item number 8A from the Health Department.
Counsel, as a reminder, this item was tabled from the April 22nd council meeting, and I move to open for discussion the Health Department's request for an additional position of a disease intervention specialist.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I'm gonna, as the chair, I, I need to do a point of clarification because there were some emails that I was trying to catch up on this afternoon. And in reading the, personally, me reading the letter, which is on page number 45 of the packet in today's council of packet, and I'm gonna look at the representative from the auditor's office, Ms. Carley. Because my, the whole, my, I'll tell you straight up, this is the hiccup that, where, that people I think are having, is I know last year Auditor Gregory had basically said, moving forward, it was, I feel like it was this time last year, we kind of implemented this rule that if you did not have a contract, the county was holding on or holding off on making moves. We, as council, were holding off on making the moves. So I just want to make sure, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, it is the auditor's recommendation that we do not appropriate until we have fully executed contracts.
Okay. Because there was something that happened last year where we kind of did, we jumped the gun just a little bit. And while we did that, there were some things that we had to move around to rob Peter to pay Paul, essentially. It's just the same.
Correct. And I, I do know that that is in code. I can look up that code really quick if you'd like.
Okay.
Give me one moment.
Okay. Because the other thing that I wanted to bring to the attention, I'm sure our council members are very savvy and read in the packet, is the fact that, I think where I kind of got a hiccup is all awards, actually, the very first part. The letter was from March 27th of this year, and it said a contract amendment will be initiated 7/1/2026. And I'm not certain if that is a typo, or if that was supposed to say 7/1/25?
You're with me here?
Sorry, King.
I'm not sure if that's a typo. Um, I think that would be something for the Health Department to clarify with a grandeur.
Okay. Can you all clarify that?
Is it in the packet?
Mm-hmm. It's on page 45.
I don't think I have that, but I could clarify that because my understanding is that that would be a typo. They're just doing closeout at the state now and that it would be July 1st of this year.
Okay. Actually, it's on the letter that we all just got here.
It's in the award letter?
Yeah. It's on the, what we just got passed out to us. So the other thing that I'm, I'm having a little heartburn about is, it says all awards contingent upon CDC, available CDC funding and are subject to change at any time. This letter is not a contract. And when we say that, we, and we have the best practices that the auditor has given us as well, that's the part where I'm a little concerned that we might be doing something a little too fast. Because also, just help me understand, I think I understand this, been on the council for about four years now. This, like, the contract has to be approved first by the commissioners and then council has to approve, approve the funding. Is that?
Yes, that is best practice, and that is what is explained in section 272A of Monroe County Code, specifically section 7.3.6.
And to, and I don't get a chance to watch commissioners meeting since they're at 10:00 AM on Thursday morning, but, but I do watch cats, and I always go back and watch them. I'm assuming this has not gone to the commissioners?
I think the original IDOH contract has, but I don't think an amendment has gone to the commissioners for approval.
Got it. So my concern is we would be going out of our lane, jumping over the commissioners and doing something like this right now when we've seen the funding that has been, we've all been whiplash by state legislation and all the moves, the moving parts here. My little concern is, it says upon available CDC funded and are subject to change at any time, this letter is not a contract. That is my concern for us to do the business for this particular topic because I don't want to jump ahead, not saying that we can't come back to this in the future, but we would be going against the best practices of the auditor and what we usually do as council. The other thing is, we would be going, like, we would be going against this, and we have other departments that will be watching, and we know that people watch because we get the emails. But I don't want to do something that is, it goes against what we have done usually with council business. And again, we would not be having this part of this discussion if we had a contract from the state. Because if we had a contract from the state, I think, you know, I could, I could feel less heartburn about this, actually. I wouldn't probably have any heartburn at all because we would have it. But that would be my concern, and I don't know if Ms. Kelly has any comments to that.
Oh, yes, sorry. So a couple of things, I think, here. When we went into 2025, our department was planning to have a Health First Indiana-funded DIS position. So we knew some of these changes were coming. We knew that we were planning on having three full-time grant-funded positions, which we have the signed contract for in our hands now, and having one that was going to be funded from HFI. So we have those funds there. When we received the contract, we had an employer, an employee who was in HFI. When we received this contract, the, the first move was to move that employee to the contract so that he could begin assisting with the entire district, okay? Rather than just being focused on Monroe. But our plan was to backfill that HFI position with another DIS. From my understanding, we've already paid the insurance, you know, for the entire year. That, that was our plan. So that kind of shifted and changed when we had to switch over in liaisons and there, it was brought to me that there was a concern that we really needed to have grant funding, not be using Health First Indiana funding, you know, for these services. So I reached out to the state to inquire about, you know, the possibility of that. And they have seemed very willing and happy, you know, to try to help and work with us. But I think kind of where we're at now is, we've had to shift our priorities and what we had originally planned on doing in 2025. And now I kind of feel like we're in limbo because, are we gonna get another position? Are we not? Do I need to just go back and tell IDOH, we can only have three positions? We can't take on the additional counties? You know, we're just kind of looking for some guidance about how to kind of move forward. And I really, I am not sitting here saying, use these funds for an amended contract that we haven't received. I'm saying, can you please consider letting us use these HFI dollars that the state already approved for a disease intervention specialist? It takes three to six months to get someone trained. We already have those funds approved for a DIS position in HFI. Can we use those?
Okay. And I apologize if you feel like you're in limbo, and I hope, you know, we're not the cause of it here. I also kind of put it back on the state because if not given, to your knowledge, like, they've not sent a contract at, at all, is there, have you had a, a chance to reach out to them to kind of follow up? Because again, since this letter was dated back from March 27th, you know, I just am curious to see what's the holdup with the contract.
So my understanding is they're closing out their fiscal year, and so they're waiting until July to be able to then, that they can then initiate contracts again or amendments. I mean, I think, I think we're all in challenging situations right now. I mean, all, all we are trying to do, or all I'm trying to do, is handle and navigate the best that we can in the situation that we can with the information that we have. Because we don't know what's, you know, in the future. But we have to try to make the, the best decisions and still take care of the needs of the public while balancing that.
Council members, does anybody have any comments or questions? I see Counselor Hock has her hand raised. Counselor Hock.
Yes. My concern here is that any letter that was dated before the state final, made the final decision on dollars might not be what we want to rely on. I'd like to see where, where, where the funding is going to come, how much funding that we're going to be given. And I want to see- And I want to see it in writing from the authority that, that says, "This is how much we're sending you." And because whatever was decided before, will those dollars be gone mid-year? That was the other thing I wondered, was the funding that comes in that we're working out with now, that, I mean, since the state doesn't work on the same schedule that we do, is that, do they send us proof of more funding coming in mid-year? Or how does that work?
Sorry, I'm trying to understand. Do they send us an update on the grant funds to expect? Was that the question?
Question really is, if, if an information came to you before they actually had the authority to spend the money, it's like at state level, they changed the amount of funding available for this coming year. So, at what point then does that change? I mean, I just want to look at the timeframe, please.
If I'm understanding correctly, uh, we didn't receive an amount that they would be awarding. We submitted a budget. And when we submitted a budget, our original budget was for three full-time positions. And because we were planning to have a a position that would be funded through HFI. Of course, we need approval for that fourth position. But again, we submitted a budget to them for them to review and then they approved that budget.
But it's not, it's, the people approving the budget are not certain of the, the exact dollars that will be coming.
We've received that. We have received an executed contract for the budget that we submitted that was approved. That was 289,000 something. So we have that contract.
Okay, and it's from what date to what date?
Uh, it began March 1st of this year.
Counselor Men, uh, Hawke, what you can't, I don't know if you can see, the letter we have received grants us an additional $58,835 in addition to that 289,909 for this additional position. That is, uh, the contract amendment itself cannot be completed until July 1st, the beginning of the new fiscal year. But we have, from the Director of the HIV STI Viral Hepatitis Division, from IDOH, this guarantee of $58,835 for this additional fourth position.
I was gonna... Go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I think, I keep kind of circling back around to, like, we have the Health First Indiana dollars. Like, that, that has been approved and appropriated that we, that we can use. Either in the interim or maybe, you know, if something happens, then we have to tell the Indiana Department of Health that we cannot take, uh, the expansion.
Yeah, Counselor Irvison?
Two things, and I, well, three things, let me start with this. You all are up against it. There's a lot of counties that you're serving right now. And I think everyone in this room understands that that has been an increase. And I don't think anybody in this room understands just how much work that actually is. I want to preface everything I'm going to say today with that. We, we have not walked a mile in your shoes. And I think that needs to, that's something you have said, and I want to, I want to acknowledge that from the get-go. Just quick, uh, term four of the grant, Councilmember Hawke, this grant goes from March 1st, 2025, and it concludes on February 28th, 2026. So, this is a, a one-year, or a little, yeah, a one-year term. The, the second clarification I wanted to make is that a, a letter, while incredibly helpful and gives us a lot of information, is not a guarantee of funding. We need it in a grant. I'm really excited about this additional $58,835 for the fourth position. We don't have it in a contract, though. And unfortunately, given the, the date on this, it's going to be a long time. We, we, we need it in a contract. We're not saying no. We, we just need it in a contract.
And we have HFI dollars to cover this position. If we can get a, an approval from council for the position itself, our HFI funding can pay for this individual.
And then if this doesn't come through, we will simply tell the state...
Can you speak into the microphone so they get it?
Then if this doesn't come through on July 1st, as expected, for whatever's going on with the federal government, because this is federal money, not state money.
Right.
That's funding this. If this doesn't come through, we tell the state we can't add this additional position. But we would still have added the HFI-funded position that we've had money for.
Just so much uncertainty.
We have certain HFI funding and that is assured. We already know what we're going to receive from HFI. And that budget is being submitted now.
Counselor Wiltz, you had a question?
So, this, adding this position, I'm, I'm actually, I, I think that there is a disconnect between, between our understandings of the different funding sources here. And we have the, the HFI funding that's, that is the state funding that we signed in and signed on and it's in place. And that has been included in your annual budgeting process that we approved. How many disease intervention specialists were approved as part of that?
One.
One. Have we added any since then? Have we approved, I'm just trying to walk us down the...
No, because we had three that were approved. We've had two full-time for a few years now. The third, um, when that position became vacant, I did not refill it because I knew that it was being used from COVID supplemental funds that we were going to lose. So we always had the three positions. But with this expansion, due to the workload, we need a request for a fourth position. So, we had one in HFI because we were in limbo about what our grant funding was going to be when we were creating the budget in 2024.
So when you say there's one, there's one in HFI funding, there are two others in the, the other funding?
Yes.
There's actually three, three, in the grant funding.
And the two other positions are not, they're filled?
Two, two positions are filled. We had three positions total. One D I S program coordinator, two just D I S.
Okay, and the two that are filled?
Yes.
Are paid through exactly what fund?
Now, they are both paid through grant funding. So when we received the new grant this year in March for the 289,000, I moved the HFI individual to the grant to begin to help with the expansion. But that D I S position was still in HFI. The, my intention was to backfill it so that we still had that Monroe County, um, D I S.
And that third position is now being vetted. We have applicants that are being interviewed to fill that third position under the grant funding.
And it's that grant that's, that has been modified to account for the expansion?
That is the 289,000, which the state awarded us what we asked for. So I think that that's part of our disconnect here too because, you know, we'd already gone through the budget process in 2024 for 2025. We already had a plan for 2025 of what we were going to do. We submitted a, a budget for three full-time positions. And, and that's what they gave us and that's what we have now. And so that's kind of what's changing too. Because if we're, if we are not going to be allowed to use the HFI for the D I S position, then that's why I reached back out, you know, to the state to say, "Can you give us an additional grant award for all of these positions?" They did not deny it because it wasn't asked for.
And the reasoning behind that is the, is the jurisdiction of where the money can be applied in terms of where the person can go, what counties they serve? So, the HFI funding is just Monroe County?
Well, I mean, they could go outside and serve outside of Monroe County. But we were trying to respect the HFI dollars and that those Monroe County dollars and making sure that that work was, for that HFI was being, you know, focused on in Monroe County.
Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Wiltz. That, that question teed up where I was going to go. So I, I just have some timeline questions. As we've mentioned during the open house, I think using our departmental time to really help educate council would be useful on some of this stuff. But I wanted to pick up right there, which is, as we talked about, why we asked the state for the additional funding for the fourth person. It was, at least as presented when we had this conversation, um, as you're working through it, was to make sure that Monroe County promised dollars for HFI were being used in Monroe County and that we were not expanding, um, our slice of that pie to support a much, an increasingly growing region for D I S support. You know, and so, um, that was my rationale behind that. I mean, the, what's remarkable is that this was a good news story that has been kind of ground up and waiting for a basic, actual issued contract from the state of Indiana to go forth and, and do what we talked about. Let me just, I just, I think we need to get some timeline down here. So I, I think Counselor Wiltz mentioned it, but just to be clear, the HFI funding that we get as a county is primarily for Monroe County. Is that a fair statement?
I would say that's fair.
Okay. And, um, do the other D I S counties also receive HSI, HFI funding? For their own other ends?
Every county does not have D I S, if that's what you're asking.
And HFI?
HFI.
So like Hendricks County has a, gets a slice of HFI funding, perhaps?
All counties who have opted in have HFI, yes.
Okay, and you mentioned you planned your budget with the HFI dollars in what month? When, when did you plan the HFI budget for this year?
For this year? That would have been in the summer of, um, so that would have been May of
Of '24?
2024.
Okay. And then when did IDOH expand the DA, D I S region where we took on additional counties?
Uh, so the discussion of that began in December of 2024?
So after budget season and then they expanded our jurisdiction to cover other counties. Okay, so we went from about a quarter of, I think Monroe County accounted for about 25% of the population before the expansion, and then it was pushed down to about 13% when we added Hendricks and the other, so like several hundred thousand potential people, right? Okay. And so when did we get told that we needed to add a fourth person in order to cover that expanded jurisdiction after our budget season? When did they tell us we need that .43 or, or that extra human in order to do the work?
So if I'm remembering correctly, this would have been during the same time in the winter of 2024 when those discussions, um, were had. And so the Indiana Department of Health actually reached out to our department to ask about our interest and willingness to take on the additional counties.
And it's at that point that the thought was, well, we could just use our Monroe County HFI money to cover it or we can ask the state to cover the increasing burden they're putting on our counties to deliver services outside of our border. And that's why we asked for that extra resource at that point. And which they gave us, which you asked and they agreed at that point. We just don't have the contract yet. I, this is the, and I'm just, thank you for indulging this because I think the timeline's really important to understand what, what point we discussed the expansions and adding this stuff. Lastly, is the HFI program currently funded by the CDC's PPHF? Is that what feeds it from CDC to the state? Where, where does the money come from, from CDC and HHS that, that puts money into HFI that comes to us? Does anyone have that?
Okay. HFI is Indiana funding and has nothing to do with the federal government or CDC.
No, no CDC, HHS.
Absolutely not. HFI came about in Indiana as a result of the Governor's Public Health Commission a couple of years ago.
And that's what Governor Braun just cut?
Yes, yes. So it's entirely state funding.
Okay, so that bucket of money, state funding, 50 million cut out of it, we're projecting 50 million statewide cut out of it.
And if you look at this letter from IDOH,
Okay.
you will see federal, the federal award number, this is federal money. This is their CDC grant from the STD program.
So that's where I'm getting confused. So the fourth position is funded from CDC dollars?
Yes.
Okay. And, and is this program, that's not the PPHP program, this is a separate CDC program?
No, that's, it's categorical, the, the CFDA number is right there. It's for sexually transmitted disease.
Doing, well, STI money was cut by the Trump administration, wasn't it? I mean, that's one of the cuts CDC's faced?
No.
Well, there, thank you for entertaining that, but, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
I could go, that's okay, that's okay.
I'm just trying to track where it's coming in.
As far, as far as anyone knows right now, this money that has been appropriated for sexually transmitted disease programs through CDC that go to state and local health departments, there's not a rescission on it. It has not been grabbed back.
Thanks for walking through the timeline. I think it helps at least to get it into the air. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Decker? And then I'll go to Counselor Wiltz.
Thank you very much for your answers to all the questions. I just have some fundamental questions here. I, I wanted to make sure that my head is straight around is we've got two people in positions now interviewing for a third currently. I got it right? And then this would add a fourth position funded by the letter that I'm looking at in my packet. Okay? And that covers six different counties in the state, is that correct?
16.
16 county, okay, that's a lot. Let me ask you this, and I ask this fundamental question as a person who will not have to do this job, nor do I have to do this job. And we do have that convenience on this side, is that we have other headaches, but not that one. I'm glad that someone else has got the other one. But, um, do you believe you can interview and hire in a timely way to fulfill this role and have that person make meaningful work in that, those 16 counties? What are your thoughts on that?
I think that my thoughts right, on that right now is that it would be really wonderful to be able to recruit and hire two positions right now. We're already going through the, the interviewing process. We have qualified applicants. I feel confident that we could hire for both positions, get them hired on at the same time and start that process. There is a downside to thinking about hiring someone now and then waiting until August or September and then reposting, trying to recruit. And then we're looking at coming to the end of the grant cycle within a few months. And it's going to take three to six months to get the person trained to then start assisting.
And basically, if I'm looking at this right, and you're essentially saying, if I've got a, a barrel of applicants right now, it'd be better to pull two out, put them to work than to go and stop and start and stop. Okay. Second thing I wanted to ask is this close day on the funding period is February 28th, 2026, which if we sneeze wrong, will be here in just a second. So really, ti- time is of the essence. I also offer this because we're in a different era. Years ago, Counselor Hawke would be the one to say this, but now I'm going to steal it because things are strange in the world, more than they've ever been. And I say that as a comic book reader, we're in a strange world. If we lose funding, these positions understand that come the end of February 2026 and working with those 16 counties, the tax barriers of this county and whatever strange machineth we're given from all the different people that fund, we likely, most assuredly, likely's is not the right word, most assuredly could not fund that position. What are your thoughts on that? Because you have to be the one in meetings that says, and now the dance is over and I'm sorry, but you're on to other things. What are your thoughts on that?
So I think that there was a concern with our current employees that if we did not take on the expansion, that they would not have jobs. So I think that there is that. So trying to, you know, work with the state the best that we can, help to cover the district and this additional workload, and keep the security of their positions. But I think that there is a clear understanding because throughout every hiring process, you know, the county has a form that individuals have to sign that, you know, essentially says that funding for the position is not guaranteed. And I think that unfortunately, where we are right now in the world with so many individuals and grant funding being cut, that I think that there is a, just a real level of awareness, which I think is heartbreaking for all of us because I don't think any of us want to live with that kind of uncertainty. If the grant funding did go away, though, we would have to consider if we are still in HFI and those core services, how we would still be addressing, you know, those requirements.
Sorry. I'm gonna argue with myself. I've hired DIS under this grant funding with CDC since 1989. And it has been ongoing yearly. And yet every year, we've had, we have to say to new hires, please understand, this is a yearly grant. It may not, Congress may not appropriate it. We may need to let you go. And since 1989, it hasn't happened. Given everything that's going on in the country, even though I just said to Counsel Henry, this money right here, there's not a rescission on it. This, this funding is still there, so it's quite likely it's going to be in place till the end, till February, right? We don't know come October 1st with the new federal budget, what CDC's budget is going to be like for the STD program and how much money they're going to have for 2026 to put into states. So while I want to say, this funding has been in place for decades without a problem, I also want to say, but you know what? This year could be the year it's not. And
and the last thing I want to say is that communicable diseases don't just go away. We really need to look at the importance of our DIS workers and what is happening particularly across the state, I would assume, and we know across the nation, that syphilis is on the rise and other nasty communicable diseases that do kill are on the rise. And yes, we know that there are legislators who apparently are not as concerned about the public health as I would love to believe. Still, we cannot allow ourselves to worry about what may happen next year or the year after that. We need to address what's going on now. And I understand that you all are dealing with, what money do we have in our pot right now? Well, right now, we have money in our HFI funding to cover this position, to make sure that we are covering the people in this county who have communicable diseases. And whether we like it or not, people come from outside of our county, into our county and infect others. So we can't just hope this will go away, that the communicable diseases will go away. And if we keep putting off hiring someone, then we are not only putting a heavier burden on the two workers we have who are doing their best, but we're shortchanging not only our county, but the surrounding counties as well. Thanks.
All right, I'm gonna start wrapping this conversation up here. I'm gonna call to Counsel Wiltz, and I think Vital had a question as well.
Based on what I'm hearing, just a couple of things I need to say. First, public health services are one of the core things that county government has to do. We have to take care of our people. We have the justice system, that's a core service. We have public health, it is just as important. This is a part of our obligation. And when we get down to needing to cut things, we need to really look at what those core services that we value are. This is one of those things. We are being told that though this is possibly going to be funded by a grant, they're willing to fund it using HFI money that they have. I, I think we should fund this. I mean, I, this is their money to manage in a, in a way that they see serves the community best. And in my opinion, it, it makes sense to do that. We're not, as long as you're going to fund it out of HFI until or unless we get the grant funding. That, to me, makes sense. That's all I got.
So two things. One, I guess I'm interested to know what the job posting says. Does it say something about the fact that it's maybe in jeopardy of any monies? That sort of thing? So I'd be interested to know that. And then the second thing is, I want to know what the HFI monies can be spent on. Are there any limitations on the HFI money to fund this? Those are my two questions.
If I'm remembering correctly, the job posting, when we have grant-funded positions, it will say grant-funded positions. So the current posting that we have now is a grant-funded position. I would say for our HFI positions, we wouldn't use that same terminology since it's not technically a grant. So if this fourth position were approved and we were going to use HFI dollars, it would have language surrounding, you know, being contingent upon HFI dollars. As far as limitations for the HFI, which I guess we'll be talking about in our next agenda items, we do have new changes that have come into place with Indiana residency and citizenship requirements. So that would be something that could factor in. But as far as supplies, travel, training, salary, it all fits in with that preventative core service, which health departments can use up to 60, or at least 60% of the funding must be used on those preventative core services, and this would fall under that 60%.
Okay. So I'm looking at Ms. Kim Cho here because to Counsel Wiltz's point, and what, you know, they're saying, they have the HFI dollars in a fund, which is 1161. And so hypothetically speaking, if for some reason, if the council decided to, we've heard them say that they have the fund in the contract, like, they can reimburse, couldn't they reimburse that line back if they get the fund? Or when, I shouldn't say, hopefully? They can reimburse the line back, essentially? Because they have it now?
Yes, they can do, and I'm looking at Carly here, they can do what is called, like payroll corrections in order to reimburse or backfill the original fund. So that would be 1161. So when grant funds came in, they could turn in paperwork that would backfill that back to the 1161, and then moving forward, everything would be made out of the grant after that. Is that, am I correct in that, Carly?
That is correct. I do want to note that funding in 1161 is anticipated to be less in future years. Just to put that out there.
I'm gonna go to Counsel Henry, and then I see Counsel Hawk has her hand up. And then I'm gonna ask for council members to wrap up this discussion so we can keep it moving.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief, and I may leave space for Counsel Hawk, as she's been waiting. So I don't disagree with anything that's been said here about communicable diseases. I don't disagree with Counsel Wiltz's sentiment that public health is a core mission of the county. There's the other part, which is our job, which is fiduciary responsibility. What we've been seeing, I think, in this conversation, and I thought was resolved with having the offer from the state to fund the fourth position, is an acknowledgement that, that the state of Indiana is passing its burdens on the county governments to execute a regional mission. I mean, the truth is that this shouldn't be a program. It should be run by the state government in a multi-county region. We're being asked to carry 16 counties because we're a pretty good county at public health. And what I see when, when we see those burdens shift further and further out to good counties that do good work is we're carrying that water for the state of Indiana, and that should be a district program. And so I guess that's the philosophical problem I'm having. Of course, it's a public health mission. At the same time, we have our processes in house that are saying, we just need the contract because you all want us to do work outside the county. I have a health administrator that works for Monroe County, and she spends a lot of time worrying about stuff outside my county. You know, and that means taxpayers are having, the board of health and health administrator are concerning themselves with a lot of stuff going on in Hendricks County because the state of Indiana has passed that burden through a contract to say, do this more work or else you're going to lose all of it. I think that's a problem. The message needs to be sent back to the state on that. So I just, I don't disagree with the public health mission. I disagree with the nature that we're doing this work, and all, all I'm expecting is just the contract signed by the state of Indiana that they've promised us in that timeline. So I appreciate the passion tonight, but that, that has to be said. I mean, that has to be said. We're doing more and more outside our county, and the expectation is someone, our taxpayers shouldn't be carrying that burden, especially if we have that HFI funding we'd like to use for other core services that we now have to set aside for something else because we're waiting on Mike Braun's Department of Health to send us funds. Thanks, Madam President.
Counsel Hawk.
Looks like my, yeah, my computer's running out of juice. I'm concerned about doing anything that we're waiting for confirmation starting July 1. That's what I'm hearing, that, that's what the auditor's office says the best practice is, is get that in hand before you literally hire someone. So I have concerns about that. The other thing is, we were talking about one kind of dollar, and now we're saying, well, we could backfill with HFI, do whatever. But remember, HFI says that, you know, no more than 10% can be used for administration. So is this considered to be administration or what? I mean, that's a part of the new rule as well. And when I called the state to see if I could get some updates so that we would know where we were, they really don't know yet, and they're just trying to put this together. I understand a couple of you are going to go to the AIC meeting, and the next, maybe that's tomorrow. Maybe you can learn more tomorrow about how this might work.
Okay. Thank you. And looking around, and I think, and then I'll wrap up with.
Yeah, I'm just, I just would like, before we vote on anything, could you clarify what the motion was at this point? Because I've lost, I know we're asking for a new position, but I don't know if it's tied to a specific fund or the grant or what's happening. So please go ahead, just, I, I wanted to make sure I understood before I voted on anything.
Technically, it was to open the discussion for it. So, and I, before, I'd use the point of clarification of, we see the award letter. It specifically says it's not a contract. And folks, you know, have a hiccup on that, and rightfully so. I completely understand. Again, we have that because we got PTSD with what the state has done to us. So we feel some kind of way, and we're, you know, protective of what it is that we have to do. So I guess I'm looking to council members to figure out, what, what are we doing here? Counsel Irison.
Counsel, I move that we table this item indefinitely so that we can have more clarification from the granting organizations and HFI.
All right, there's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second. Any final discussion on the motion that was presented? And looking over to the table over yonder here. But most, or putting this in indefinitely? We don't have to, because we're waiting on, we would be waiting on the letter from the state, the contract from the state. So we don't need to have a specific date because we're just waiting. It's not like the previous items that we had. Got it. Okay. Okay. Counsel Decker.
I appreciate that distinction on that. So this could come back as soon as that is received?
It would have to be advertised, so they would have to submit it.
Yeah, they'd have to advertise the appropriation.
Just like anything else. So they would, they would be delayed. They could get it, and then they would have to put it in three weeks before they would be able to, you know, have a meeting for us to hear it.
Starting.
And thinking about this, I think with other departments, when we were waiting on a contract, we just tabled it from one meeting to the next so that we didn't have to do the re-advertising. And then it was, we could just proceed accordingly when we received the contract.
So for example, it was, like, I feel like it was the prosecutor's office that for months, we were waiting for that contract to come through, and every meeting, we kept pushing it back.
Correct. And that was because then we didn't have to try to re-advertise as soon as we got a contract.
Okay. So by doing that, that helps us so that if council votes and the vote is to table the discussion, or to table it, we don't have to do the whole re-advertising and take a little bit longer and affect them?
No, there is no appropriations attached to this request. So, because this was done prior to the request of that 58,000. So we've only been tabling the motion to add another position. That's all, all we've been doing. So there is no, if you move to, it's tabled indefinitely, they could go ahead and do the additional appropriation, but that's not going to show up until June 10th at this point because of the timelines. But so right now, this would just be, if you're using the, if you want to use the HFI amounts, it's just, you're giving them permission to fill a position because it's already in the salary ordinance. Okay. So if you table it indefinitely, all you're doing is tabling the addition for them to fill a position.
And then we'll just keep having it on the agenda and just keep moving it?
You don't even have to until they come back.
Until, okay, got it. Okay, understood. All right, any other comments or questions? Counsel Wiltz.
If this position, if we approve a fourth position, they, and we indicate, because it says and simultaneously amend the 2025 salary ordinance, wouldn't that imply that we're putting it, attaching it to a funding source?
It is, this, I was out of the office when all of this was taking place. This, this position should not say simultaneously amending the 2025 salary ordinance because it's already in 1161. It's already appropriated in 1161. They just want to fill that position with a fourth body.
I just don't understand why we don't do this. Sorry, that's not a question for you, Kim.
Counsel Decker.
I am gonna vote no on the table. And with all due respect to all counselors, we're talking about disease here and good faith effort. And while I want to honor our processes and contracts and all that, good Lord, when I meet my maker, I don't want to say, hey, I was waiting on a contract on that one. And I have to tell you, I watched a lot of public meetings in my life, and I hope that unlike some who are fans of the. unlike some who are fans of those, the C-span effect of life is sort of making government become inhuman. And I don't know what the hell's going on, but I'm going to vote no on this because I'm a little bit worried that a Trent Deckard yes is a stand between somebody in one of those 16 counties getting a test, or this, or that, or the other. And I don't know, there's, I've seen tougher questions come before the council, and I offer that with all due respect to all, to all counselors. I just, I'm worried that the bureaucratic processes, which are there for reasons, are going to choke, choke the good reasons. So I will be no.
Okay. So we will move on to a public comment for this particular motion. If you have a comment, please come to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
This is a roll call vote on the motion to table this item indefinitely. Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Wiltz? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
No.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
No.
Sorry, motion passes four to three.
Oh, that item is tabled, and now we'll move on to item B.
Counsel, as a reminder, this item was tabled from the April 22nd council meeting. I move to open for discussion. The Health Department's request in Fund 1161-0000, local public health services to deappropriate account line 10108, disease intervention specialists, in the amount of $40,012.80.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Ms. Kelly.
I guess I'm not sure what to say to this, because this is the funding that we were going to use for the fourth position that has been tabled indefinitely. So I guess at this point, I just would assume that the deappropriation is going to happen. I need to report that back to the Indiana Department of Health, and that I will have to submit a budget revision because the state does intend for us to use our full HFI budget.
Ms. Turner King, can you provide some context to this particular concern? Because of item, or what we did for item A, can we, how do we really proceed with item B?
I think these two items have been following the same path because at the March 11th meeting, there was, there was uncertainty or misunderstanding, I'm not sure what to call it, about whether, when we created that third grant position and moved the person from the HFI position, if we were going to be defunding the HFI, or deappropriating HFI, I don't know when, if, when the council created that third grant position, it was abundantly clear that we were leaving the HFI position, and that's when council office suggested the deappropriation. So these two items have been following the same path.
So essentially, what you're saying is, since we table A, we probably should table B. Okay.
Yes.
Counsel Iverson.
Counsel, I move to indefinitely table this item.
Second. All right, we got a motion and a second. Any conversation from counsel regarding the motion? Okay. Any public comment for this particular item? Please come forward to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
This is to table the deappropriation indefinitely. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
No, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Counselor Fidel?
Like one follows the other, yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
I think I already voted.
Pardon?
I already voted. I'm pretty sure I did, but yes.
Can I not call somebody? Because you were my very, you're my very last name.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. So the motion passes six to one.
Or two noes.
Two noes.
Yeah, I'm just going to redo it.
Okay.
Okay, starting again. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz? Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
No.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Henry? Motion passes five to two.
Okay, so that item is tabled. Moving on to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 1159-000, health fund for the creation of a new account line 32410, personal healthcare, and to simultaneously approve a category transfer of $228,866 from the personnel category to the services category.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Kelly.
So these next two items kind of go hand in hand as well. So with some of these changes that have, that have just recently come to Health First Indiana, with the residency requirements and the citizenship requirements, this request is being made to be able to move our public health nursing contract to the county fund 1159 and essentially swap positions that are being paid out of 1159 to 1161.
Counselor Iverson?
First of all, I think it bears saying that this law is just abhorrent. It's just absolutely horrible that we are putting, again, the burden of what the federal and state government should be doing on the local government. This, this is really unfortunate. We have to be doing this, but we have to do it anyway. My question to you as the Health Department is, how are you going to ensure that, quote, "funds may only be used for Indiana residents who are lawfully present in the United States," end quote?
So that's something I'm working with county legal on at this time. So the day after that I had the meeting with the state that we were provided with this information, I met with Dave Schelling to begin these discussions. I felt that it was the most crucial action to take at that very first step was to get our public health nursing contract moved to a fund where those stipulations were not going to impact services being provided. And I don't feel that we'll have the same stress and burden with our environmental positions, which is kind of the reason for that swap. But we have a lot to work through with our internal controls and how we will be moving forward with these changes. But we, there are actions being taken that you will continue to see over the next couple of months based upon some of these changes and having to move positions around from where they're being paid from.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Henry.
I just have a basic question. I agree with what Counsel Iverson said. So like hypothetically, if we had like visiting faculty from abroad that are running a house, and they had like a mosquito pond in their backyard, like, if they're not citizens, could we, in theory, clean up the mosquitoes under this? Like, I mean, I know that's like really specific, but I'm just trying to conjure, I'm just trying to think through this. Like, certainly you've had these conversations. How are we practically going to do it? What's your random thought about that? I, I mean, you're asking for an ID before we remove the mosquitoes from someone's backyard at this point? Is that what the state's saying to you?
We're really going to have to work hand in hand with legal on how we're going to move forward.
I don't envy this. Yeah, thanks.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes. When I first saw this, what I'm seeing is that we're moving three of our positions who are under 1159, which is the county dollars, moving them over to HFI, I get those. And those dollars are not, you know, guaranteed. And so we're moving people that had, are in a guaranteed fund, more county government, over into the non-guaranteed fund. And I'm just thinking, how do we, how do we move back and forth to these different funds and not protect our present employees? And are we telling them we're moving them over to a grant fund? They're not setting in a grant fund now. Somehow or the other, I don't know any of these people, so I'm not, I don't have a personal, you know, I don't have a dog in this fight, except that I just think we need to be fair to our county employees. And this doesn't seem fair to me.
We have completed payroll transfer forms in anticipation of this being approved. We have received our award amount for 2026 and 2027 for the budget. There will be additional changes that will have to be made and some more switching around about what's going to be paid out from where. But I have that budget proposal already created. I'd be happy to share that at an upcoming council department update, perhaps, to help be able to explain some of that. But I don't think it's, I don't think we're doing anything dishonest by moving these positions. In fact, I think that we are making the best decisions possible to help try to secure all of the services that are being provided.
And the other thing is, part of the question I had was, and I said, I've met with others, this is just not last minute questions, how does that affect? I know that we've been told that we have to put more dollars into that local, the 1159, and at the time, I believe the auditors thought it was going to be about a half million dollars. So as we change these dollars for the HFI, then how do we know how much we have to put in for the match? And I, it's just, I want to make sure that we're not actually ending up costing local taxpayer more dollars in order to provide services for all these other counties, because that just clearly is not fair. And, and we are here to protect the local folks. They voted to send us here to watch after their dollars. So I, I just, I have concern about trying to switch all these things around to avoid doing what the state wanted you to do. And so you're just saying, we don't care, state, we're just going to do it some other way. I hope they don't say, well, if you're going to do that, we'll just not send you any of the dollars. I don't know. Don't like this at all.
I don't think that's what you were saying, but I'm going to let you have the floor and see what you need to say in that regard.
Certainly. I, I actually, we were making this decision to avoid asking counsel for an additional appropriation. And I have copies here of all of the signed payroll change forms, so all of the employees are aware that we were proposing to move their position from the county fund to HFI. So employees are aware of that. In addition, HFI is not a grant. And, yes, so this, this was to be able to keep our account lines the same without having to make a request for additional funds from the county.
Thank you for clarifying. Counselor Wiltz?
I also think that the reason you have to do this is disappointing, to say the least. But thank you for coming up with such a logical and hopefully effective solution for this. I for one think, you know, this is the kind of proactive budgeting that I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I had something else to say. I'm not going to say it. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much for, not for y'all, trust me. All right, we've moved on to a public comment for this particular item. If you have a topic of, or, sorry, I just got blown away there. All right, recalibrate. If you have a public comment on this agenda item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, now we are at item D.
D and E.
D, yes.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 1161-000, local public health services fund for the creation of new account lines, 10109, environmental health specialist wastewater, 10111, environmental health specialist general, and 10113 and 10114, environmental health specialist foods, and simultaneously approve a category transfer of $185,046 from the services category to the personnel category.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Ms. Kelly, anything to add to this?
No, not, not really. Just, this is, this is very unfortunate, but just, again, trying to make the best decisions that we can given the circumstances that we have.
Got to do what you got to do, I understand. Any counsel questions or comments for Ms. Kelly? If you have a public comment on this particular item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry? Oh, sorry, I didn't see him leave. Counselor Hawke? She's not present as well. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Now we move on to item E.
Let's see, I believe, let me just double check here. Yep, okay, great. Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 1159-0000 to amend the 2025 salary ordinance to remove positions, 10109, environmental health specialist wastewater, 10111, environmental health specialist general, 10113 and 10114, environmental health specialist foods, and simultaneously amend Fund 1161-0000, local public health services, to add 10109, environmental health specialist wastewater, 10111, environmental health specialist general, and 10113 and 10114, environmental health specialist foods. All our positions at 35 hours, PATB non-exempt.
Second.
Motion and a second? All right, Ms. Kelly, anything to add to this one? No? Okay, all right. Counsel Iverson?
I don't have any questions on this, of course, it goes with all the other ones. But we did have an interesting note in our packet today about the reason why tobacco cessation was not included in
cessation was not included in this list. And I guess my, it just got taken out of HFI Core Services.
Yes, so that will be coming soon to you. So that, that officially goes into effect in July, so we are working to move our maternal and child health coordinator position into a different fund, so our Tobacco Trust.
Thank you for being on top of it.
You'll see it soon.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments for Ms. Lori Kelly? Seeing none? All right, if anybody has public comment on this item agenda, please come forward to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel, I, we need a, just a little bit of a break here, so I'm going to call recess for just five minutes. The time now is 7:12, and so we will be back at 17:00 after. I ask we all come back at 17:00 after. Please don't make me call your name to come back to the dais. But again, if we can come back at 17:00 after, we're just going to take a short recess. All right, thank you.
Protein, I have protein bar. I've got protein and butter here. What's wrong? Wait, it's a fundraiser? I'm talking about that tonight. Kyla and Leah should do this.
I didn't know about that.
Here for a little bit?
Trade spots for a while?
All right, are we loud enough? Are we rational enough?
I would put that out into the ether with whatever.
By the way, I like the format.
That's a good question. I don't know.
I was like, I, but now, I actually, at the same time.
And it's shocking, I was like, anybody could get that anywhere. But then, now, I feel like, oh.
So, you know where that came from?
Oh, yeah.
A whole bunch of budget stuff.
I heard they fired the last guy. That also happened right when I got hired. I got hired and everything changed. So, job safe, no idea really.
But then you get rid of the local news and downwind, right? Are you familiar with?
I hope that's what you're getting paid out of it, because that money's in doubt. The state's better than I can bet.
Hope so, yeah. I don't, I don't know a lot about it, to be honest, so we'll see. But, you know, I remember when I interviewed for the job, I, change up and nowhere to the IDS.
It's roughly.
Number we call for time and temperature.
Reason everyone in the interview said, yeah.
Tomorrow realtor time, fire, 33, temperature 78.
I will say, I'll give you, there was really no reason.
So I don't know. We'll see how many more of these come through.
Keep showing up, because his opinion, it's important, but it needs to be challenged.
Trying to do a good job when I was stressed, really.
I kind of like it.
So I think I'm running a risk of getting a ticket.
I parked at the garage tonight.
I couldn't find my, my hang tag.
Tell you what, yeah, it should be all right, just have to keep feeding them. Four o'clock over there, scary. Because like, I saw my tag leaving, everybody's leaving, and I might pull them in, and realize how many clock watchers we got.
Yeah, yeah. I don't like it.
I'm just warming up, okay? That was the opera first act. Comes the ride of boundaries.
One minute.
Thank you. All right.
Yep. That's pretty good. I forgot to shorten your chair today, so. Frat.
What are you talking about?
Okay. All right. Oh, man seen. So, next up, we will go to item number nine, which is from the Clerk's office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Clerk's request and fund 8956-0000, HAVA Grant, the creation of account line for 0001 equipment, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $35,873 in the Capital category.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? We see Ms. Clerk Nicole Brown. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam President, esteemed members of the Council. My name is Nicole Brown. I currently serve as the Monroe County Clerk. Before I get into my request, which I am going to hopefully make refreshingly short and concise for you, my election supervisor was kind enough to accompany me because she had some items of interest for the members of the Council, if you wouldn't mind to indulge.
Hi, I'm Kylie Ferris, Monroe County Election Supervisor. I just kind of want to give a update about vote centers and what we're seeing so far. At the last election board meeting, we let the election board know that there was an 83% yes for vote centers, 8% for no, and 8% for no with changes. I did want to give a heads up that the next meeting is on Monday, so we are excited for that, and it will be at 5:30 PM here in this room. And then voterless maintenance, first set of postcards will start going out from the state on this Friday. We will anticipate to start seeing those back into our office by mid to late next week. That will be going through every single registered voter, which we are currently sitting just under 89,000 registered voters. Voterless maintenance will come to an end about August 29th. That will be the deadline for the state to receive all voterless maintenance.
Okay. All righty, and then with that, ladies, members of the Council, I'm before you tonight. The analogy I'm going to use is that I am essentially asking you for a short-term loan with 0% interest guaranteed, with guaranteed funds by the Secretary of State's office. And what that means is that within the last couple of years, the Secretary of State has made HAVA grant money available to clerks. There have been two rounds. The first, in the first round, as you might imagine, with only a couple million, two, three million dollars, and 92 clerks fighting for various amounts of money, big, small, somewhere in between, Monroe County was not selected in the first round of grants. So when the second round of money came through, I applied for the same grant, and what I had done, whether or not we go to vote centers, is I had reached out to our election vendor and asked, what kinds of things would you recommend that we get in Monroe County that would be helpful to us, whether or not Monroe County goes to vote centers? Because, of course, the first time I applied, we, we didn't even have a vote center study committee. So, the, the second round of grants, they made it a priority to give money to the people who did not get it in the first round. So Monroe County was incredibly lucky, and we received a grant in the amount of $35,873. There's no need for any money, no matching funds from Monroe County, but the, the stipulations of the grant are that we have to purchase the printers, which is what I asked for the money for, the on-demand printers, which is what you all see if you take advantage of early voting. You go in and the same ballot is printed for you that you would have received on election day had you showed up at your polling site. So this money would cover five of those printers, as well as the equipment and licensure, I'm sorry, the licensure to support the equipment. And once we prove that we have expended that money, then the Secretary of State's office will reimburse us. So that's why I'm using the short-term loan with zero interest and prayerful for your approval and support of that.
Thank you. I'm going to start off with a question. So, and looking at the quote that was in our packet, it looks like, hmm, the expiration date says, the quote, is this for the, the quote here? It says expiration date, 7/27/24. Is that?
It is still good. I've checked with our vendor to make sure that the quote is still good.
Okay, how much longer would the quote be good for?
They, they are aware that we received this grant money, so they're ready to, we're ready to pull the trigger as soon as you would say. I don't know how to.
Yeah, so basically, okay.
The quote is still good.
Okay, and then you all went, or this got passed through the commissioners?
Yes.
Back in April?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm losing my mind, sorry.
That's one of the things, because I just wanted to make sure, like, people are watching, like, previous conversation versus this conversation. Essentially, what this grant means is, you can get it reimbursed back, you got to spend it first.
That is correct.
And then we'll do it. And that is what we saw in the packet.
That.
Got it, okay. All right, I'll open it up to council members to see if they have any questions. Looking to my left here, no. Oh, look, it's, oh, Counselor Deckard.
Is my math right, Madam Clerk, that these printers are roughly, if there's five of them, 35,000, so about 6,000 to 7,000 apiece, is that roughly? Yeah, so ideally, a vote center would have one of those on hand, and they shoot the ballot out really, really quick, so you don't get your lines, right? Yeah.
So these, there would be generally two to three at each vote center, and then as it's printing the ballot, they are printed on high-speed printers.
It's been a while since I've been in that rodeo of election stuff, but are you hearing feedback from other clerks that these printers are getting faster and faster with time?
These are the same ones that we've been using at early voting.
Gotcha, and those are very fast. So, yeah, I never see too bad of a line there. Thank you.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes, this is great. Congratulations on the grant.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify the relationship between this, well, not the relationship, let me back up. Buying these irrespective of vote centers, you need them.
Will be helpful.
And you'll use them, well, you, you'll use them in early voting, but you'll also use them at precincts? Do they, or do you need them there as well?
So if we are not a vote center county, we only use them at early voting, but we also use them during mailing voting, because we print them in our office off of these machines as well.
Oh, okay, all right. Thanks.
Okay, Counsel Iverson, and then I see Counsel Hawke has her hand up.
I'm supportive of this, I'm excited about it, but the thing I'm most excited about is in the packet, we have an award letter, a grant, the commissioner's signed document, an invoice, we've got the whole package. I cannot tell you how helpful that is. Thank you, thank you.
I wanted to make sure that I had what I needed for you, sir. Happy to do so.
Oh. That was a moment.
Adding a little salt to the one there. All right, Counselor Hawke? Have her hand up. Oh, okay, looks like she's trying to unmute, and she's waving her hands and saying, go on without me.
I'm just saying that my question has been answered. Thank you. Kate, Kate asked the question, got the answer.
Efficiency. Yay. All right, any other questions or comments from counsel for the clerk? Okay, I'm seeing none. We'll go to public comment for this particular item. If you have a public comment, please do so by coming to the lectern here at the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, next up is item 10 of the Waste, for the Waste Reduction District.
Counsel, I move to approve that Monroe County officially accepts responsibility for post-closure care on behalf of the Waste Reduction District of Monroe County pursuant to Indiana Administrative Code 329-IAC-39-3.
Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Mr. McGlass?
Yes, good evening. Thank you for your time and consideration. I have with me Mr. Lee Paulson, who is our landfill director, and he'll hopefully be able to help me answer any questions that you, you may have on this. First, I do apologize, there was some supporting documentation that I had intended to have attached to the agenda request that I did not see included in the meeting packet this afternoon when I was reviewing things. I did get that emailed out, so I hope that everybody has had a chance to, to review those, or at least has the opportunity to pull them up here while we're discussing that. But this is an annual thing that, that we're required to do. I will take the time to do a little background for members that weren't with us last year this time, when, when we did this, so, but, so when the district was formed in 1991, the county transferred ownership of the Monroe County landfill to what was in the solid waste management district, now the waste reduction district. And through a series of unfortunate circumstances, the difficult decision was made in 2004 to close that facility, and the final closure work being completed in 2008, and certified by the state in 2009, which entered us into our post-closure period. It's 30-year, excuse me, the state required 30-year monitoring and maintenance period. At the time that we closed, this requirement did not exist for closed facilities. That's a requirement that was put in place by the state beginning in 2015. And we have always used, used this local government financial test option to make the demonstration. The county has always been gracious enough to do that on our behalf, so, so we're here asking for that to be done again this year. Since, since some of the supporting documentation is not available, we'll provide some of the information that's included in there. So the, what you have, or what is in the supporting documentation are two different cost estimate calculations prepared by our engineering firm. There are two separate, two permitted hills that were in that post-closure period for a to be done again this year. Since, since some of the supporting documentation is not available, we'll provide some of the information that's included in there. So the, what you have, or what is in the supporting documentation, are two different cost estimate calculations prepared by our engineering firm. There are two separate, two permitted hills that were in that post-closure period for, were closed at the same time. And the combined remaining post-closure cost estimate is two million two hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. That is ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and some dollars less than what the demonstration was last year. So it is coming down. There is an inflationary factor that is required to be used in that calculation. So, you know, economic climate can impact how much that, that does decrease year over year. But, but we are trending in the right direction. We are halfway through, this is year fifteen of our thirty-year period for post-closure. Would also remind the council that in the, I guess, ten years now that we've had to do this demonstration, the district has never once had to ask the county to help fund any of the monitoring and maintenance activities out there. We've, we've almost always been able to absorb that, absorb that cost into our annual operating budget. And then one year we weren't able to, the state required us to install some additional groundwater monitoring wells. But we do have a, a trust fund that was originally established for this purpose, but was not adequately funded to meet these requirements at this time, so. But we, we do have the ability to tap into that fund if needed, if our budget can absorb things. As of April thirtieth, the fund balance is eight hundred and five thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. So, you know, we have ample funding available before we would ever come to the county, you know, to ask for any assistance. And I guess, I guess, and then the reason that we come to the county, to the council, to ask for this demonstration on our behalf is the, the one criteria for this option that the district doesn't meet is the remaining cost estimate in relation to annual revenue. The state rule says that you can only do assurance for up to forty-three percent of your total revenue. So our revenue is a little over three million dollars, so we're still upwards of seventy percent of our total revenue on that estimated closure cost. So that's why we don't meet the criteria to do this on our own. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much for that explanation. Good to see you back here as always, once a year. I'm gonna look to the middle left here to see if there are any questions or comments about this post-closure financial assurance. See, oh, Councilmember Wiltz.
Mostly a comment, but I've been serving on the board for the district and really appreciate the thoroughness with which they are approaching not just this type of thing, the fiduciary things have been enlightening in terms of just, you know, all of, everything that, that goes on with the Waste Reduction District. So just a little plug there, they do a lot, you should check them out. And I would like to come visit the landfill in some day and have a tour, if that's okay.
Absolutely, would welcome any council members to come take a tour, we'd be happy, happy to schedule that.
I didn't, I did announce they did a tree planting out there recently, and, so alive?
Lee Paulson, I'm the landfill director out there. Tree planting was a one-day event, we planted eight thousand trees native. I don't remember all the species that we planted in a low-lying area flood zone that the district owns, part of that stuff, that, just trying to put as much back to nature as we can to kind of offset the carbon footprint of the landfill from what's there. Oh, but that was done, that, we did that back in April, sorry.
You're also, we're also looking at the possibility of solar panel installation, right?
Yeah, we're still. Very preliminary stages of that investigation, but yes.
Good news. All right, looking to my right, any comments or questions? Seeing none, let's go to the public. If you have any comments or questions about our landfill and what we're doing with it, now would be the right time to come to the podium or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley has stepped away. Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you a lot. Keep us in touch. All right, next we'll move on to eleven A, the prosecutor's office. Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request in Fund nine one five nine dash zero 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 zero, High Tech Crimes Unit Grant, to appropriate a total of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-nine cents in the services category. Second.
Good evening, counsel. This is actually just to correct an error that I made when I came to council in February and had the High Tech Crime Unit appropriation made. I had it made into a location, an incorrect location. We use the zero 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 location, because this is not a reimbursable grant, it's an upfront grant, and it carries forward every year. And so I want it in that same location so that we don't have to move funds around. So I'm asking you to appropriate it into the nine one five nine zero 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 zero, and then we're gonna de-appropriate it hopefully from the incorrect location.
I just came here as backup in case the council had any questions about the High Tech Crime Unit, but thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Thank you, Madam Prosecutor. All right, let's go to my right first, any comments or questions about this error? To my left, yes, Councilmember Wiltz.
So I've been kind of digging in a little bit to how the grant funding, you know, is carried over and the craziness of fiscal years not matching up between various entities and things. So when you put, when we appropriated this, it was into an account ending in two four. Is that, was that meant to represent a year that, of award?
It's, the system was created probably fifteen years ago, two, maybe ten. And it is close to a year. It's like usually close to nine six two four would represent twenty-four, the year twenty-four. It gets confusing, because sometimes we have a two-year grant that'll be appropriated into one location. In this case, I've never appropriated it into a nine-six location. It's always been appropriated into the zero 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 zero. It was just an error on my part for this particular grant. You know, my stop grant, my voca grant, those are all reimbursable, and so we really wanna make sure that we don't co-mingle funds from year to year. In this case, anything that's unspent in twenty twenty-four for the High Tech Crime Unit gets pulled forward to the following year. It's not sent back to the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council. It remains in use for our purposes. So that's why I want to keep it in the zero 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 zero.
So there's, there's an expectation that is spent in, within a certain period of time?
Not for this particular grant.
And if we, you were not to get the award at some point in the future, you could still spin down if somebody, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Madam President, I've sought comment from the right and from the left, and so we're, that's where we're at.
Okay, duly noted, anybody else have any, thank you for doing that. Anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns? I see Ms. Woodruff has her hand up.
Yes, I do want it to be known that it appears that this fund is overappropriated by seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. I did contact the department regarding what appears to be an overappropriation, and I would like for that at least to be discussed before we proceed with correcting this.
Okay, the funds that we received for this calendar year are one, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven forty-four, forty-nine, and that's what I'm asking to have appropriated. Is that the cash balance that you're looking at?
Yeah.
Remaining cash?
I sent a spreadsheet on April fourth where it looks like you guys received forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars on May twenty-first, but you appropriated fifty-two thousand dollars on May twenty-eighth, and that's still unreconciled.
That was for the purchase of a vehicle for use by the High Tech Crime Unit? We received the fifty-five or whatever was appropriated, I believe.
That does not appear to be the case.
Okay, well, if that's the case and you need to de-appropriate the seventy-two fifty, I mean, that's not, I guess I'm confused. We've already purchased the vehicle that the funds were provided for.
The funds were provided at a lesser value than what was appropriated.
If you would like to ask council to de-appropriate the seventy-two fifty?
Is the seventy, is, do you mean like seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars being a difference between an award and an appropriation, is that what?
I must have misunderstood the email, because that's not what I understood. So I can't really speak to it without having the spreadsheet in front of me.
Is that?
The recommendation would not, would to be to not appropriate any more than the cash balance. So I would recommend that seventy-two fifty in one of the lines you have chosen be reduced to by that amount.
I'm okay doing that, I'll go back and check in if I need to re-appropriate the seventy-two fifty at a later time. I think the cash balance is different than what I'm requesting to be appropriated. Our award letter is for one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven forty-four, forty-nine for calendar year twenty twenty-five, and that's what I'm asking to have appropriated is what the contract, the signed contract guarantees. But if you would like, we can reduce the contracts line for now by seventy-two fifty, and I'm happy to go back and discuss it further with Carly.
All right.
The cash, okay, yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Were you, I, the remaining cash available, well, I, I guess I need to go back and look at her spreadsheet, because this is not exactly what I understood.
Okay.
But I'm happy to have you lower one of the lines, say contracts, by seventy-two fifty, at least so we can move forward today. And if I need to come back and have the other seventy-two fifty appropriated, then I'll do that later.
Okay, do I hear a motion from council?
Counsel, I move to amend the prior motion to amend the contract line three oh oh five six lower by seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any other further comment on this? All right.
Just for the public's sake, I believe that reduces the total line.
One oh eight, two eighty-one.
One hundred, no.
It reduces it to one oh eight.
Reduces it to one oh eight.
Yes.
Two eighty-one.
Okay, good, good, all right.
Okay. Any other clarification or discussion from council?
Can I get the total appropriation then? Sorry, I didn't bring my calc, my calculator up.
One forty-six, four nine four, point four nine.
That's what I get, too.
Again, one forty-six what?
Say it again. One hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-nine cents.
Counselor Hawke, you're unmuted, just FYI. Okay, um, all right, let's keep it moving. Uh, any, so nobody has anything, any public comment on this particular item? Please raise your hand.
I was just gonna quickly say, after we figure this out, we can then come back and quickly do this.
I'll go review the worksheet further and see. I'd be surprised if that were the case, but I've been wrong before, that's why we're here tonight.
Nothing else to say for that one, except for, can we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Okay.
Amendment passed, so this was on the amendment.
Okay, so the, that has passed, and coming back to the overall motion, any other further discussion there? Seeing none, again, if you have public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the overall motion?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, and then we'll move on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request in Fund nine one five nine dash nine six two four, High Tech Crimes Unit Grant, to de-appropriate a total of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. Second.
All right, Ms. Hamlin.
This is to de-appropriate the funds that were appropriated in February. I had one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven forty-four, forty-nine appropriated at that time. We've not spent any of those funds, because we've been spending out of last year's zero 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 location. I don't know if Carly needs us to adjust these, okay?
Don't adjust down, all right.
Any questions or comments from council? Looking at teams, at Ms. Hawke, seeing none, okay. Any public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in NatU Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing that everybody has gone home for the evening and doesn't want to make public comment, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your patience. All right, and next up, we are at item number twelve from the sheriff's office.
Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request in Fund eight one four three dash zero 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 JAG Sheriff to create account line two three nine zero one Supplies Law Enforcement and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of four thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars in the Supplies category.
All right, we got a motion, and a second, and we'll see Ms. Yonkey here. Hi, welcome.
So this is a JAG grant that we received from, it's a co-grant with Bloomington Police Department. And this is just our portion, we decided to buy mobile radio batteries. We received the funding, we paid for it. The JAG grant was paying for obviously the majority of it, and we have a small. Appropriate the funds, and we want to change the account line name. It was originally Deputy Supplies, and now we're just changing it to Law Enforcement Supplies.
Okay, all right, any questions, see a hand already up, Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Madam President, and what a great program, the Burn Grant or the, the JAG program's great. I do have a question related to the last sentence in the narrative. Has, have you all started making plans for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four spend down?
We have for the twenty twenty-three, we were approved for, I don't remember the amount, but we're buying, they're called LifeVac kits.
Yeah.
And we have not made a decision for the twenty twenty-four yet.
I'm gonna ask a question here as delicately as I can. Have we received any correspondence since January twentieth to the county or the Bloomington PD as a partner in this grant from Department of Justice about the grant at all in terms of funding for twenty twenty-five and beyond?
I have, I don't know. I don't know. I would have to talk with Bloomington Police since they are the...
You get the pass through from them. Okay. Maybe I'll direct that question to City Hall on Wednesday. But no, thank you for that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Looking over here to my left, anybody got questions? Nope? Okay. And seeing no hands raised on teams. All right. Public comment? If you have a public comment on this item, let's hear it. Come to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right. Next up, item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request and fund 1170, Public Safety Lit Sheriff, to deappropriate a total of $4,443 in the Supplies category.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Anything to add on this?
No.
Okay. Anybody got any questions or comments? Seeing none? Move to public comment? Please come forward here to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. Seeing none? May we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. And you get to stay put because we are getting ready to go into another item for you. Item number 13.
Counsel, as a reminder, this is the second reading for this request due to the lack of unanimous vote on April 22nd. I move to approve the sheriff's request and fund 1170-0005, Public Safety Lit Sheriff, to approve two Knowledge Skills and Abilities, or KSA, three-year level statuses, and to simultaneously amend the 2025 salary ordinance as outlined on the agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. And I'm gonna look to Ms. Shell. And then... Yeah.
This is just a reminder that KSA request was completed and sent out. And then the council members have the option to have a total review of this by the entire council. So, this is the second time it's coming through for the amendment of the salary ordinance.
Okay. And did you want to add anything to it?
Not since the last meeting.
Nothing has changed, except you want it. Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from council members? Counselor Deckard?
I'm just trying to recall. Was this a... What was the roll call on this? Was this a one in opposition, two in opposition?
One.
One? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And so essentially, for anybody that's watching from the public, just to kind of reiterate how this happens is if somebody objects, then it comes to the council for a full review. And because this is... We have to have a unanimous vote first and foremost. And obviously, we didn't have a unanimous vote the first time. So, you're back again, and this is the second time. And now, I think I've talked enough. Counselor Hawk, has her hand up? Go ahead.
Yes. I wanted to make sure that everyone knows who the one person was. And that was me, and I had nothing to do with which department, whatever. I really believe that we should have had, and it looks like we are going to have, Lee Duran, in the meeting, a major discussion about any of the KSA's situation where we're putting forth extra dollars. And remember, even if it's already in a budget, we could count on those reverting back to help support the overall budget. So, I think that this is a year that's unlike any other that we will have ever experienced in my umpteen decades serving. And so, I really am not going to be supporting these KSA's. Has nothing to do with whether or not the person really is qualified. That's not the point. They're supposed to be looking at the budgets.
Okay. Thank you for telling on yourself. Okay.
Happy to do that.
Well, we leave it up to the Hawk. We know it. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Or comments? Okay. I'll just say this. Like, I will support this. And I know that obviously, like, what we keep talking about, and I won't go long into my preacher's stance here. But the only thing that I will say is I do know for a fact that earlier this year, there were KSA's that did not go called to the carpet and get called into question. And so, I would just like to say that we should practice the same for anybody else that's coming through with this. And so, in this particular case, then, you know, for what you're saying. And because whether you can say that at the beginning of the year, we had no idea what was happening, maybe, maybe not. But the point of the matter is, I think for me, consistency matters. And if I'm gonna be consistent with saying yes to other things, I want to continue to say yes and maybe no with consistency. But this particular one, I voted in favor of this beforehand, and I am glad to do it again tonight. So, that's all I'll say about that. So, moving on to public comment. If you have a public comment on this particular item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Or sorry. Motion passes six to one.
Thank you for that correction because we know it was coming. All right. Next up is item B.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of the prosecutor's request and fund 1000-0009, County General Prosecutor, a Knowledge Skills and Abilities, or KSA, status level of eight years for a misdemeanor deputy prosecutor, and to simultaneously amend the 2025 Salary Ordinance Account Line, 13009, Misdemeanor Deputy Prosecutor, SO Attorney A, 40 hours, to reflect the eight-year KSA status.
Second.
All right. Ms. Shell, would you like to state the obvious again?
This came to the office, and it was evaluated and did qualify for an eight-year. It was sent out to the council, and there was a request for it to come back to be reviewed by the entire council.
Thank you. And looking to Prosecutor Alafont, if you would like to say anything about this?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yes.
My name... Sorry, I didn't introduce myself earlier. Erica Alafont, Monroe County Prosecuting Attorney. Good evening. And I am here to request the council's approval of a Knowledge Skills and Abilities request for a misdemeanor deputy prosecutor at the eight-year level. We submitted our request on April 17th. I'm happy to report that this attorney began in my office yesterday and is already showing a lot of promise. This was submitted based on the KSA Resolution in Place, Resolution 2024-20. I want to start by briefly stating my need to recruit and retain highly qualified attorneys, which is the stated purpose of Resolution 2024-20. In February of this year, two of my most experienced deputy prosecutors left on the same day. One of them had over 25 years of experience as a prosecutor. The other had about 15 or so years of experience as a prosecutor. One retired after a long career in public service, and the other moved away to be closer to grandchildren. I had the good fortune of hiring one replacement previously, to which you did give me a Knowledge Skills and Abilities enhancement of eight years, somebody that I recruited from another office with over eight years, specifically as a deputy prosecutor. The request I'm here for tonight is a candidate I've chosen to handle a misdemeanor caseload. I would just note that on the horizon, I'm expecting another vacancy soon. I have one deputy prosecutor who just put in notice that she'll be moving, and she'll be leaving on June 13th. That position's been posted for nearly two weeks now. There have been scant applicants for open deputy prosecutor positions generally. I've had the good fortune of receiving a couple of very good applicants, but overall, there have been few. And some of them have been from unlicensed recent graduates or similarly unqualified candidates that I simply can't consider at this time. When a deputy prosecutor position is left unfilled, it increases the burden on all of us to see that that caseload is covered. On average, a misdemeanor deputy prosecutor handles roughly 300 to 350 pending cases at any given time. Our misdemeanor deputy prosecutors do also handle some Level 6 felonies, including simple drug possession, second time operating while intoxicated cases, and habitual traffic violation cases. And those are included in that 300 to 350 caseload number. I want to remind you that deputy prosecutors, unlike public defenders, do not have caseload caps. They have to take as many cases as we give them. And, you know, the case filings themselves don't show the full extent of the work that is put into our cases. We often coordinate with investigative efforts, whether that be, you know, helping law enforcement acquire search warrants, attending forensic interviews of children at Suzie's Place Child Advocacy Center, or other types of sort of pre-filing investigative work that sometimes never ends up in a case being filed. In 2022, the Association of Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys and WIS produced a prosecutor analysis report that contained data on prosecutor staffing that was based on 2019 filings. That report found that in order for us to be in parity with public defender caseloads, I would have to have here in Monroe County 27.75 deputy prosecutors. When I'm fully staffed, I have 18 deputy prosecutors. I'm not here asking you for more people. I just want to be able to pay the people that I hire as much as I possibly can to make this an attractive place to work. I'm done making my greater case for my office. I'll now turn to the candidate at hand. This person that is now in the job worked in both public service and private practice in their 26 years of legal practice. They clearly possess Knowledge Skills and Abilities substantially equal to or greater than those expected from a new hire. Although this candidate does not possess prior Monroe County government experience, they have nearly eight years of experience specifically in government service. Most recently, the candidate served about 21 months as a senior staff attorney for the Indiana Civil Rights Commission. In this capacity, they served as a trial attorney litigating complaints of discrimination. They delayed giving notice of resignation to the state until they could wrap up an important case defending the rights of Hoosiers who had been racially discriminated against. So, I think demonstrates ability and values. The candidate also served three years as a county attorney in another Indiana county. Since the county has now employs two attorneys who have previously been deputy prosecutors, I'm sure I don't have to explain to you that they have transferable skills. The candidate attended various public meetings, as well as consulted and advised department heads to avoid and prepare for litigation resulting from the provision of government services. Further, for six years, they served as a Judge Pro Tempore Overnight Court in an Indiana County Superior Court, where they proceeded over hearings and infractions and criminal misdemeanors, specialized driving privileges, and also made eligibility determinations for problem-solving courts and deferral programs. So, if you don't know this, our deputy prosecutors who handle misdemeanors and Level 6s handle all of the initial hearings in Monroe County, regardless of the level of offense. And that is where a majority of pre-trial release decisions are made. So, it's important that we have somebody who can understand what they're doing in court. Just a few more specific skills and abilities that would prove to be very valuable to my office. Both in private practice and at the state, the candidate has handled every state of... Every stage of litigation, from investigating a claim, evaluating whether to bring suit or not, to pre-trial motions and briefs, legal research, evidence review, negotiations and agreed resolutions, all the way to jury trial. In representing individual clients, the candidate has developed communication skills that directly transfer to those really important and delicate victim communications that we are required to do. They have litigated approximately 12 jury trials and countless bench trials over the course of their career. All of these skills are the bread and butter of the daily work of a deputy prosecutor. This candidate brings a little bit more to the office. They have experienced teaching and training young attorneys. In fact, in a prior job, they've trained one of my other current deputy prosecutors. So, I can report that he came to my office with a solid base of skills and knowledge, and that had a lot to do with her training and mentorship. So, we have a lot of young deputy prosecutors in the office. I often do like to incubate new attorneys in the misdemeanor position. But I would like to add this attorney's years of litigation and life experience into the mix in my office. And so, I just want to thank you. I know that you are faced with really tough decisions, and that we're all trying to be good stewards of taxpayer money. And I really appreciate the work that you're doing. But it is my hope that you can understand that this will be of good value for Monroe County. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody... I see Counselor Hawk has her hand up, but I wanted to check to the day as first to see if anybody has any questions. Okay. All right. Counselor Hawk?
Yes. I so much appreciate you being here this evening to go over this in public, why you think that this person deserves to be paid a higher salary because you believe that you need, really need, a person with this kind of skill. This is really the reason why I think we should have all of these presented in a public meeting for the public to hear it. So, they know that we're not just handing over these tax dollars without being presented to the public. And it makes a lot of sense. And I appreciate you coming forward. And for that reason, I'm gonna support this because I think this is very, very different from positions that don't require an eight-years' worth of skills. But I do want to ask what the financial difference is for the... What it would have been had you not asked for the eight-year? What is the difference between the beginning salary and eight-year? How much is that difference?
Thank you, Counselor Hawk. The baseline salary for this position is $76,482. The eight-year level is $88,380. So, the minimum fiscal impact for a full year will be $11,898. I would say that for this year, we do not anticipate needing an additional appropriation to cover the difference in the salary because we have had some staffing vacancies. So, we will be able to cover it this year without asking for more money.
And I appreciate that. But what I really wanted to hear was the difference is right at $12,000 plus what it will cost for the difference in, you know, all the other that goes along with the $12,000. This is really important that we take this to the public, that they hear us when we're deciding to spend an extra $12,000 to hire a person with these kinds of skills. And so, I appreciate you coming to the public. And I hope that in future, we will do all such of this. If somebody wants to hire somebody at a higher level, that's always done in public instead of all of this behind the scenes and not full transparency at all. So, I appreciate you doing this.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'm gonna hold my comment because I definitely have something. But Counselor Deckard had his hand up.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to point out that Counselor Hawk... I appreciate a counselor's right to object and then to bring it before hearing. And it looks like we've got... and then to bring it before hearing, and it looks like we've got KSA's on the agenda as a whole, and that'll be a lively discussion and a good discussion. But I also want to point out that having watched the county through these CATS meetings and all the versions of CATS that we had throughout my life, that a lot of things cost the taxpayers when we bring it to the public. A lot of things cost. So, for example, in the room this evening, you know, we're approaching 8:11 PM, there's a lot of costs that goes into staffing, and it goes into overtime, and goes into other folks that have to cover it. We've got CATS folks up there in the balcony, TSD, probably one at home and one in here. We've got many department heads. We've got a lot of folks, and that's not including all the emails throughout the week and the calls and those things, too. So, I would like some, at some point, I would like to, and I'm going to do this work on my own as a counselor, I'm going to do this, I'm going to figure out what we pay in elected official costs, where we are creating in these tough times additional work for folks to sometimes do for things where we might then turn around and vote yes for it. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical, but everything costs money. Lighting this room costs money. Powering up all this computer technology that now we have to have because we survived a pandemic costs lots of money. Me talking more is costing us money, and that's before the taxpayer. And so, I want to quantify that, because I think we've got a lot with elected officials across this community, including myself tonight, going on a little bit too long, and we need to be mindful on these agendas.
Decker has spoken. Okay, anybody else have anything going this side to my left?
Nope.
Anybody to my right? Looking like you might, maybe not, nope.
Okay, so, I'll say, like I said, to the previous presenter from the Sheriff's Office, I do support this, and you all have been in the pipeline for waiting to come to present this to council, so, well, without the objection. But then you, we got an objection, and then you're here tonight with us, and so, it sounds like maybe this will go through the first time unanimous, which is a good thing, but also, it's a good thing. So, I'm just going to say that. But I also will say, anytime anybody objects to anything being brought to the council, that particular department has an opportunity to come to the public, to make their case and state their case. And I do recall, even though I had to recuse myself at the time and going back and watching the meeting back in March, when the public defender literally did the same thing, and it was also in our council packet, as well as that person was also qualified, and they also had to come not once but twice to council, and that was also done in public, too. So, I don't want to have any myths that, you know, were hidden behind the smokescreens of emails, because what is done through email is obviously coming to light with public, which is what you're doing, which is what the sheriff's representative just did, which is what the public defender's office did not once but twice in March. So, I just want to make sure that we get that on record, and we also say that, too. So, again, my whole thing that I said earlier is consistency. I'm going to be consistent with mine, and I want other people to be consistent with theirs. So, that's all I have to say about that, and I'll look to public comment to see if we have any public comment. So, any public comment that would like to be made on this particular item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Night You Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, I would like to move this to a roll call vote.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yep.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Now, we move on to Item C.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of Resolution 2025-23, An Agreement of Services with WIS, Wagon Irwin, Shealy, and Associates.
Second.
All right. Ms. Molly Turner King, hello.
Hello. So, what's before you is a resolution that will approve a contract or a memorandum of understanding with WIS, who provides professional services to include job classification, reviewing our grids, and I am going to display the contract. You've seen it before, but it never hurts to show you again. I think I'm going to display the contract.
There have been no changes since the last time we saw it?
The only change is the addition of Item J, which I wasn't prior year's contracts, and it's securing WIS's services for consulting and reviewing personnel policy and assisting conducting human resource complaint investigations when requested to do so. And so, I don't think we will regularly use WIS for that purpose, but it's good to have it in case we need it, and so, we put that language in there to mimic prior contracts. I will say the difference between this memorandum of understanding and previous ones is the length of time, so we did extend this so that it is a two-year contract, so it would be in place until December 31, 2026, and then there's a not-to-exceed amount for each year within that contract. And so, the next steps is if you approve this resolution, I will add the contract to the May 29 commissioners' agenda, because their meeting on the 22nd is canceled for approval by the commissioners, and then it would go for to WIS for execution.
Okay. Sounds good. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Turner King? Counselor Wiltz?
Yeah, so, it's notable that it's a period of two years, but obviously, we're about halfway through the first year with a not-to-exceed that's annual. Are there dates associated with the not-to-exceed that make it clear that it's, I just am curious how that's laid out and if...
There aren't dates. It just says that the total amount paid to contractor under this agreement shall not exceed $28,000 for any year within the term of this agreement. In all honesty, don't think we're going to get that even where anywhere near the not-to-exceed amount, at least for this year, because as a reminder, we have a PAC pause, and I don't, as long as the PAC pause is in place, I don't know what we're sending to WIS.
Yeah. Counselor Iverson?
And just as always, one of the reasons why we went down this road is, number one, there was no contract in existence. We wanted to make sure there was one. And number two, we were hearing a lot from our department heads about, you know, we're not happy with what came back, we're not happy with the process, and I think this helps formalize a little bit more around the reasons why we use WIS and, quite frankly, the reasons that we don't use WIS. So, I like this, I support it.
Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none. Anybody want to make a public comment on this particular item? Please come forward to the lectern here at the Night You Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yep.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Now, we are at Item D.
That's me. Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of Resolution 2025-24, A Pause of the KSA Procedures or Knowledge, Skills, and Abilities.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second.
So, I've displayed the resolution on this screen. This originated from the April 22 meeting discussion, where it was requested that we have this discussion. So, I prepared a resolution that, in effect, puts a pause on the practices for KSA, and it indicates that if passed, the resolution will temporarily suspend the knowledge, skills, and abilities practice or policy, so that elected officials or department heads may no longer submit for consideration requests to hire applicants at a three-year or an eight-year level, which are the only available levels for KSA, and that upon passage of this resolution, any applicant should be hired at the minimum base salary for the position for which they are hired, as identified in the salary ordinance. There is an expiration that says this resolution will automatically expire at the end of this year unless amended prior by the council. I did ask HR to prepare some KSA data that I can share with you if you're interested, and it just indicates. I've been advised that it was shared with you via email, so I don't know if you want me to go through that data, but I think you have it.
Let's go to questions first, just in case. It's been a long night, so, anybody have any questions or comments? Counselor Iverson?
So, as we just saw, KSA's can be incredibly valuable. They can provide value to the county, they can bring new talent into the county that we may not otherwise be able to attract and retain. However, because of the Senate Bill 1 and the fact that we're expecting a $9.8 million reduction total revenue, this is one of the tools that we're using to help reduce the cost to the county. And I hope as department heads and staff are watching and listening to this portion of the meeting, now that we are three hours and 30 minutes in, that Sunset Clause at the bottom, that you understand that we are not getting rid of KSA, but we're taking a pause to try and understand the fiscal landscape around us, so that our budgeting can be as accurate as possible, given the decreased revenue that have been handed to us at the state. So, we appreciate your understanding, and we appreciate any feedback you have, just to me, though, not to anybody else. Give me the nasty emails.
Yes, and before Counselor Fidel, I just also want to add to the fact that the reason why we were having like this be brought up at the April 22 is because of the inconsistencies regarding KSA's to begin with, and people having questions or concerns about it. And so, in light of everything that has happened with the State House and laws and whatnot, we had a long-term finance committee of myself, counselors, Liz Fidel, and Marty Hawke, and we learned at that particular meeting, which was on Thursday, April 24, that even if we were still using the KSA's, what Mr. Giratas said from FSG is that it's still pulling from our cash balances. And so, he had a strong hesitation of continuing with this practice until we can kind of wrap our heads around exactly what the state has done. So, I just also wanted to put that out there, if anybody wants to go back and watch that meeting and watch towards the end of that meeting and that conversation, actually the whole thing, but about the last 15 minutes of that meeting is when we got into the KSA conversation. Counselor Fidel?
So, I know there was a little bit of discussion from Molly about the HR, what did they submit? I mean, I'm confused as to whether or not I want to hear that or not.
Me, too.
In essence, HR went back and reviewed how many KSA's were granted annually, or every year going back to 2018, and the percentage of hires. They determined which departments asked for the most KSA's, and then how many KSA's have actually been approved as of, I'm going to say probably a month ago, because it doesn't take in account any of the ones we've recently done.
I'd be really interested in the overall. I'm not so much interested in department-specific.
So, for 2024, there were 68 new hires. 12 of those were rehires for a total of 80 hires, and of the 80, 15 received KSA's for a percentage equalling 18.75% of hires for 2024. Do you want me to keep giving you more years? Hold on. Do you want me to display this data?
Yes, please. Are there money figures associated with any of this or just the KSA?
It just lists the percentage of KSA's for each year. Okay. I'm sorry. Noticed it was up there.
So, of the 80 hires, so, is that, those were just KSA hires? Is that right?
The total 80 is the number of employees hired in 2024.
So, that's the total number?
Of the 80, 15 were hired in at a KSA.
16, you said? 16, right?
15.
15, thank you.
Only 68 would have been eligible for a KSA consideration, though, right?
I'm not sure that I can answer that question based on the data. I, yeah, I'm not sure that I have the answer to that based on this chart.
Well, could you define rehire, then?
I think hire is referencing someone who left Monroe County employment and then has returned to Monroe County employment. So, perhaps they were given credit for years of service and hired in at a greater compensation level than the base because of prior experience with Monroe County.
But that's not a KSA hire. That has nothing to do with this policy. Okay.
I see Counselor Henry had his hand up.
Maybe to continue on that train of thought, but not always, right? We can't deduce that the KSA's in like 2023, the KSA hires were all rehires or the balance there. We need a little more data to figure out the KSA rehires, I think, would be a column. I guess...
A person who was rehired would not come in at a KSA level.
So, okay, that's not the way I just heard that, but okay, thanks for the clarification there. So, I guess my thoughts, my opening thoughts on this, it's, I appreciate the data, because I think that's what I'm after, is a little more data. And some of this initial data kind of gets at something I was a little concerned about tonight, which is not seeing the forest through the trees on picking through where, what's driving the cost of salary, right? I've only, again, I'm not going to keep saying I've only been here X months, but the largest jumps we've seen, at least since I've stayed out here, have to do a salary adjustment and not so much KSA's, right? And so, when we have a position, I think we talked about a few months ago, that we moved up considerably, like an administrator position, as a complete salary adjustment, it was court reporter administrator, that gets the attention of other departments. This seems, I mean, the percentages here strike me as almost the garnish on the plate of the total problem of adjusting for salaries here. So, I guess that's my first reaction to the data. It's not as much as I was expecting. I guess I'm looking on screen here. I guess, yeah, I asked Michelle to provide me both the ordinance from 20, the resolution from 2015, and then the most recent, the talk-through, both the way we used to do midpoint versus the current state of affairs. And I guess another data point I'm after is when, you know, in the old model, if we were looking at midpoint offers, you know, how often was a midpoint offer higher than where we're at right now with the three-year or eight-year? Do we have any cross-comparison data on that, like what the 2015 version of this would look like versus what we've been doing since with the three- or eight-year offers? Does that make sense to others at the table?
Did she do that?
The old model was a midpoint, right? It was either, you know, we're honoring a three-year midpoint or not at all when someone came into county.
The old model didn't allow for consideration of experience that was not in Monroe County government.
So, and then in the original concept of, correct me if I'm wrong, on the adoption of KSA's was to try to match that experience from outside government in. And so, you've added some layers here. There's a three-year match and eight-year match. Do we know, so another data point here might be how many eight-year KSA hires there are in that column versus three years? Is that possible to get to? If you don't have it tonight, that's fine, but I think that's another data point I'd like to see.
I could easily send that data to council. I currently have a list of all the employees, so it'd just be a matter of counting them up, and I'm not displaying the list because it identifies the employees.
Sure. I think that's all I have right now, Madam President.
Okay, thank you.
I am being reminded that the original KSA policy was only for... I am being reminded that the original KSA policy was only for the three-year midpoint, and it, so it didn't, it didn't do the three and eight.
So, the one and eight were added later?
I, yeah, and it was, and it was only for experience outside Monroe County, so...
Yes, Michelle?
Um, there was an update with a one-year. Nobody asked for that. So, that one was then removed. So, when you guys updated and had, it was a one, three, and an eight, nobody asked for the one-year.
And for clarity, I believe that the prior resolution, when it talked about the one-year, it was hiring in someone who had part-time experience with Monroe County, so someone who had worked two years part-time for Monroe County could be hired in full-time at the one-year. It just wasn't a one-year across the board. It was specific to the hiring of part-time to full-time.
And, and nobody asked for that, so that's why when we updated it again, it was just totally removed.
Okay. Um, just out of curiosity, because while I was looking through the email, and I'll go to Counselor Hawk and then Iverson here, I just realized, as well, there's another KSA that went through and nobody said any objections back from April 23rd.
That is correct.
Okay, just... Okay, Counselor Hawk and then Counselor Iverson?
Yes, looks like as if I must have missed an email on that April 23rd, because I was trying to make it clear that I wanted it to be presented in public. One of the big things that I have, I guess, and I didn't vote in favor of doing this whole KSA thing the way it's being handled now, I thought it was wrong then, I think it's wrong now, because it really acts like as if the reading, the first reading of a salary ordinance, and those first reading of a salary ordinance, I think we all know salary ordinances are supposed to be read in public and voted on in public. So, I think this has just been, it's my personal opinion, but I don't like the way it's been handled at all. I didn't, I didn't like it at the time, and I haven't liked it any better since. But, there's never been a reason why the department heads could not come to us. We meet twice a month, and there's no reason why they couldn't come and as if they had some specific pressing need to do this, they could come to the council meeting in front of the public and ask for that, rather than going through this whole thing where it could be done with, when there's no reading of a first salary ordinance. I just think it's wrong. And nobody has to agree with me, I get to, I get to think that if I want to.
That's what democracy looks like. So, I guess the other thing to that is, I lost my thoughts. Um, we, I'm going to go back to Counselor Iverson, and then I'll come back to myself, because I just lost my thought in what I was about to say.
I had my question answered, but I do believe Ms. Molly Turner-King looks like she has something more important to say.
I counted it up, and so, all of the KSAs from 2018 to current, there's approximately 55. 44 of them were at a three-year level, and 11 of them were at the eight-year level.
Counselor Henry?
Well, I thank you for that, because I do think that gets back at, we're talking 11 and an eight, I mean, out of, and how many year period is that, again?
It's from 2018 to 2024.
This, so, I mean, maybe this is to maybe Counselor Deckard's point about where we start micromanaging as elected officials, but this feels, this feels there. I think the case-by-case is important, and I would, you know, I would, I would just point out that regardless of resolution votes of no's or not, not present, on the previous time that the council considered this, bringing it before us is fine, but this feels a little, I mean, I mean, that's, that's, it's, the end, the population, the statistical significance of that number is intriguing to me. It doesn't feel like that's where we're going to find the savings as we're trying to sort through SB 1 around here, is on the KSAs as opposed to things like salary adjustments or the things that were incurred before I got here. This feels like the parsley on the plate at this point. Thank you, Madam President.
And I think that was my point that I made at the end of the meeting on, during the Long-Term Finance Committee, is the fact that we also had the public defender come in here and say how hard it was for them to figure out and finally have a qualified person to be in the position. We just heard the prosecutor's office just express the many, many qualifications that this particular person has. I, I think, again, folks have it in their budget, it is not like it's an additional appropriation, I understand that it is pull on cash balance. I think my thought process is, we give it to the department head, we give it to the electeds during their budget season, we say go at it. Again, as we all can or cannot do, we can either object to it and bring forth any questions or comments, but I'm, I'm really trying to not get into the micromanaging things, because however, that's how our freaking federal government is right now, and then Indiana's saying, "I home a beer," and then they do the same thing, too. So, then here, we're just trying to figure out how we can get people. Otherwise, my concern would be that if you go without and you, for a really long time, you can also put a stress and a burden on that particular department, and that could cause an issue where they lose not only the qualified person, but they also don't retain the actual people that continue to work there, which is what we just heard our prosecutors say this evening. And I think every department can make that case. So, again, I understand the financial body and the responsibility that we also have, I just am concerned is what Counselor Henry was saying, is this enough pool for us to say, do we pause or do we not pause? That is the question.
Madam President, I stepped on my own tongue, you might have made one more comment, and I'll, I promise, I won't abuse my C-span five minutes. The, what I was going to say to that point is, is a comment Counselor Deckard made earlier is, the hidden costs of where we are losing money are not in this conversation. It is when we have departments that have incredibly high turnover, and those vacancies sit open, and our employee service division is put to work trying to market them, and the PAC process is trying to calibrate them. I have raised the idea with staff about looking at those numbers, because I think the real costs, the thousands of dollars of costs are in those overtime hours and the coverage and all that, it's not necessarily in this. But, we don't see that number in this room very often. So, I guess for me, you know, if I'm going to start going down a process of data analysis, it's going to be in those vacancies and the frequency of vacancies, and how much time department heads are eating up from our own staff and PAC and WIS to figure out how to market that stuff, that I think we're going to find different numbers there than when we're actually at this endpoint of, well, you know, here's a few thousand here adjustment on a three- or eight-year band, but I've said my piece now on that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Fidal? Yes, thank you. I wonder, maybe Molly, if you have any idea of telling, or maybe through human resources, of those 55 during that seven-year period who may still be working here? Is there a way to tell that they're, that they have retained them, maybe as a result of the KSA incentive, or are they, did they come in and leave quickly? I mean, I'm interested in the duration of their employment, I guess is what I'm saying, if there's a way to figure that out, and I don't know if you can do that quickly.
Of the 55 KSAs graded from 2018 to 2024, 22 are no longer employed by Monroe County.
That one more time?
22 are no longer employed by Monroe County.
Out, babe.
55.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any?
Well, I mean, but just to follow that through, it, that's only, I mean, to me, that doesn't mean anything without the context of how does that relate to the retention of overall and of, in similar positions? So, I mean, we can pull this apart, and I do, I do like data, and I can hang out and, and play in that all we want. I am a little torn, though, because we have some drastic things ahead of us in terms of balancing budgets, and this is, to Counselor Henry's point, a drop in the bucket. This, it's, what did McKim used to call it, decimal dust. This is, this is decimal dust, folks. And we can, we can pass this, we can say we're not going to do it, and that's, I think, fine, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I think we have to, we have to think about bigger, more impactful policy decisions with respect to, you know, employees and their compensation.
I see Ms. Turner-King has her hand up, and then I'll come back to Counselor Deckard.
I wanted to add food for thought. Of those 55 during that time span, 29 of them have been in three departments. The prosecutor and the public defender, who both come and said it's recruiting attorneys is really difficult. And then the third one is in the sheriff's office, and a KSA offsets the cost of sending a brand-new person to academy.
Say that last part one more time.
The third department whose most frequently requested KSAs is the sheriff's department, and hiring an individual at a KSA helps offset the cost of sending a brand-new deputy to academy.
It is literally cheaper to bring an experienced deputy in than a rookie, whoever.
Or attorney.
And time. Look at us, all the light bulbs going on. All right.
Counselor Deckard?
Well, one thing, and I want to offer this additionally to this, we, in public service, there's still a thing that matters, and that is public service itself, that people call the department and get a reasonable answer, that they rely on the fact that there's a deputy who's knowledgeable that responds, a prosecutor that knows what they're doing inside and outside a courtroom before it gets to the courtroom, et cetera. And I always think about those things that start to eat at productivity. One thing I will say this council's done, I always hear about how bad a job Monroe County does, but usually that's coming from outside the county, by people that then come and visit us, eat at our restaurants, go to our sports games, and then make fun of us when they leave. But one of the things that Monroe County government has done very well, I think, compared to years and years ago, and I say this is a son of a court reporter, and now retired from this county, is that we've done a better job at looking out for our people so that when they answer a phone, they can do so with the ability to share their knowledge, but also be respected in the workplace, right? We offer benefits, we offer, we have fought on this council for, I think, three to four years now, to go after a cost-of-living adjustment during post-pandemic and post-pandemic times that tried to chase keeping more people than not. I do agree with the notion that whatever the big price tag is, is that it's going to get us to that magical cut number, I don't think it's necessarily coming from this. And I do worry that we instead start to go back into the old days, where it looked like this council was berating county employees from these elected official chairs, and pretty much then getting what you put out there. You know, if you yell at a person long enough, eventually that's the service that you'll get and the service that they'll give. So, I, I'm not seeing this one here being the, the magic to it. I'm not sure what that magic is, but it's, I'm not sure it's this.
Yes, Ms. Turner-King?
Well, I have an alternative thought. So, this resolution imposes a temporary suspension of the KSA practice or policy. It seems like the theme tonight has been, one, we want all departments to be treated fairly when they're asking for a KSA. So, some of them have gone unobjected to and get approved, and others have to come to council. And then, we want it to be transparent, and so, instead of temporarily suspending the process, you could temporarily suspend the 48-hour waiting period so that all KSAs would just come directly to council, gives to department heads expectations to know that they are coming, it gives you guys transparency of hearing it, and then everyone's treated fairly in the sense that it's presented to full council.
That would be a meeting of the city council, where we would be here until midnight.
Um, I guess my other thought process is, because we're talking about a pause, like a potential pause on three and eight, would there be an appetite for a council to say, we put a pause on eight and allow three-year KSAs to continue to go through?
What would be the rationale for that?
I think, again, as decimal dust as it might be, maybe just trying to figure out, because right now, like, we are trying to do a really good job of trying to figure out how to just trim back something. So, I think that would be the ration, is to look at that as a way that we could possibly...
You're thinking maybe some sort of compromise?
Possibly, or, again, this is just a, you know, this is a discussion, we don't have to do anything.
I, I get you.
And we can continue to keep going forward with what we are doing. So, just throwing that out there for people.
Said I wouldn't talk again, look what you did. Do we know, so for the eight-year ones, what's the total dollar amount? I mean, you gave me a percentage, but we don't have a dollar amount?
We don't have that in the data that's supplied by HR, so we'd have to comp, figure that out.
I mean, that seems to be, Madam President, if that's where you're aiming, I mean, if we're talking an average of $10,000 a year, eight, I mean, I'm just trying to get a number in my head of what, like, what that suspension would look like, if it's still not a lot, you know, I'm back to where I am with the parsley comment, the garnish.
Sure.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around if that suspension is actually real dollars, or we're back to some of the other conversations we've had.
Counselor Wilt?
Thank you. So, I am so ambivalent about this particular resolution, I, it's embarrassing. I wish I could, I wish I could come up with something to be like, this makes sense or this doesn't, but, you know, I can see both sides of it. To me, though, I have to say, I don't think it's going to make a gigantic difference, but I think it is, it's clear, it will save time in, you know, of having to deal with it or, or, you know, have it, you know, come through council, and all to, to your other points earlier about money and meetings. And, you know, I guess I will, I would vote for it if there were a motion, I think, simply because it, it's cleaner. We'll just, we've already paused PAC meetings and considerations, so, I don't know. I, I don't know, I guess I'm just not sure that this is going to have a huge impact, but, like I said, super ambivalent, but I guess I would, that's where I'm landing.
Yes, I'll say, Counselor Shale?
Okay. So, I did a fiscal impact for the prosecutor's position that you just approved, and let me get this over here, and it was emailed out to you shortly after the KSA. So, you should have this in your email, but to, to the question of what is the cost of just like the one position, so, let's see, here... So, the, so the position is an attorney A, so, minimum, which is the, that's the base, for that position is $76,480. So minimum, which is the, that's the base for that position is 76,482. If you did it at the three year, 84,000. So if you, if you just look at, it says estimated fiscal impact is $10,000, 366. But with the eight year and you're looking at that difference, um, I only did the three year, sorry. But I mean, just for the three year, there was um, I mean, you can, you can just see that, you know, I don't have the eight year on there. But that amount will go down because, you know, due to the hire date. But I mean, that gives you, you can set, so for the three year, any attorney As or, you know, is, is going to be $10,000. But that is for an entire calendar year. So that might give you a, a rough idea.
Counsel, um, I feel like we, it's starting to become a little late. Um, and we still have a few more items that we have on the agenda um, before we close out. And I get to make a three hour trip after this meeting is over. So um, that being said, I, if anybody doesn't have any objections, what I would like to do is table this conversation um, until May 27th, or May 27, 2025 meeting, because Ms. Turner King, um, Counsel Henry asked for information and she didn't have it at the time. And I think for us to kind of digest just a little bit, because this has been a healthy conversation and discussion. Um, I think it seems like just kind of looking at us, and either that or we're just tired. Um, we got a little bit more questions and we could do this all night, but we probably shouldn't. So.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we will bring that back to the council for our May 27th, 2025 meeting. Um, and hopefully we have, will have enough time to look at that a little bit more and just kind of think about it and process it. And that conversation, whatever we do with that particular conversation will move accordingly. So, um, oh yes, so before we do that, do I have to do a public comment on this? No?
Tagging it.
Okay, so we're tabling it. All right, may I please have a roll call vote?
This is on the motion to table the item to the May 27th meeting. Counselor Wiltz?
Yep.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Fiddle?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counsel Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Great, thank you. Um, as I said, we still got more stuff. So we have item E, which is the presentation of our Midwest Consumer Price Index, CPI, and proposed cost of living adjustment. Um, so I would like to give Kim Shell the floor as we do a brief overview of the particular item.
Sorry, hold on just one second. So annually at this time, I present to the council um, what the COLA could possibly be with regards to the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index for the Midwest region. And so for December the 24th, it was 3%. And then um, I, oh, I spelt flat wrong. So, but um, we also, I also give you what the flat rate would be. And so for this year, the flat rate based on the number of employees, the total salaries and the total hours, um, it, it would be $2.28 on the hour. That, that would be the equivalent of a 3%. So, and then I gave you some different variations of a percentage, a flat rate and how that would look. So that, that's what I do for you guys annually at this time. We uh, normally go with the uh, what the CPI is. And so that.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, anybody have any comments?
Counsel Iverson?
So as we move forward into reviewing budgets and the budget season, will this 3% be baked into the budget from the get go? Or will that be added towards the end?
Based on what we've spoke with, with the president, um, and the, the letter, the idea is to incorporate it right off the top, include that in the budget. And then um, it's already there and then departments have to make cuts in other areas in order to ensure that the COLA is there.
And to add to that point, the reason why we thought that was a good idea is because every year, at least since I have been on council, like, the, the COLA conversation comes in last. And then usually departments are, like, we're trying to figure out how departments can help us get to the magic number that we want to get to. So thought it would be a good idea, excuse me, um, to incorporate this and have everybody else, like the departments, cut from, you know, other things such as overtime or other line items that could also um, be cut as well.
Which would be like the categories of in their supplies, what, uh, in their services, in their capital. Um, and that is always because it's easier to do it at the beginning, budgeting accordingly, and then we have more time to make corrections this way rather than waiting and you um, wait till the last minute, like a week before you need to adopt. And I've got to make sure that all the departments get their amounts right. And in a couple of years ago, um, because of a delay in deciding on the COLA, I, there was an error that was discovered and some departments were shorted in their budgets because of the COLA.
Anybody else have any questions? I'll go to Counsel Larry Fiddle and then Wiltz next.
So I'm confused about the 228, 3% in the proposed 22, 26 flat rate chart. And then to the right where it says uh, CPI region 3% as of December. So is the 3% on the left an average per, is that the flat rate every person would get? Is that the number, $2.28, is that right?
Yes, the flat rate would be on the hourly rate.
Okay.
That a person has, the 3% would be as well as on each hourly rate.
So you got to that number, the 228, by taking the total salary budget, dividing by the number of employees. Is that correct?
Yeah, the employees, their hours and their salary.
Counselor Wiltz?
I apologize if I was supposed to have looked at this letter earlier, because I did, I don't know. But um, I didn't. And so I just need, I, my question is, I like, you know, I'm interested in, in the new approach. So requiring or asking the, the departments to calculate their next budget with an included 3%, not necessarily flat, but 3% or flat?
Yeah. Whatever you decide.
Okay, so whatever we decide, got it. Asking them to calculate it with the COLA included. Are you also requesting that they keep their budget flat? So that you're asking for an, is that where the reduction is coming?
Like, not necessarily, um, but it's more of this time around. Oh no. Um, this is how I know. Um, not necessarily with that. And Michelle, you can help me out here. I think you, the idea is, the biggest idea this time around was to include it or have the, everybody work around the proposed CPI 3% rate. And really just work within, try to get their numbers down essentially is what the, the, the theme is for this year. Because we always have people that will come with supply numbers that are crazy inflated. Um, and then we look at what they've done previous year and it's not even close to what they are asking for. So essentially, we're just, and this particular letter is just trying to get people to be mindful, very demure of their budgets.
Go ahead, no, please.
I appreciate trying something different to get to this, and I'm open minded on seeing what this gets us. One thing um, I wanted to mention is that of course with any budget, I think we can all agree, nothing is final until you have one. And there's a whole involved process of figuring all that out. And with that notion in mind, any rate can move around, any line around. And in this kind of a year, likely will, like it's, but, but we've got to see where.
Of course. And also wanted to, I'll say that we talked about this 3%. Um, Mr. Garitas mentioned this at our Long Term Finance Committee as well, what he was saying in terms of other um, counties and what they're doing and what they're looking at is the um, CPI, which is a 3%. So, so sorry, I'm going to stop talking because obviously I've talked a lot. My kids will be super happy, but I see um, Counsel Hawke has her hand up.
Uh, yes, I wanted, have a lot to say about this. Uh, just because, you know, it is a time for, for us to be looking at what Senate Bill 1 is doing and, and the other legislation that has uh, gone through. Uh, but one of the things I would want to get correct, or at least a better understanding in the letter, it was talking about Monroe County being short 9.5 or, I, I don't have the letter in front of me. But I, I want to make it clear, that's not what Monroe County government is going to be short. That's all, that, and I'm not, the number that is being presented there uh, was supposed to be tied to how much the schools and how much the city and all of them would be losing. Monroe County government itself wouldn't be. However, what we don't know yet and uh, is what the legislation is going to mean to us when they said that we were going to be able to get a 4% growth quotient. But the, but the way it reads, it reads like from the levy of the previous year. Now, the levy of this year, we know is 3.8 million shorter than what it was uh, intended to be. So is that 4% levy growth going to be with the start of that reduced levy? Or will it be uh, in, will there be a change in that? So that's something we need to look at as well. And in addition to which, the, the additional credits that's going to be applied, that's going to be in effect for the revenue for, as we're doing revenue projections, that those credits are going to be in place uh, for next year. And, and there, those credits are going to be huge. It's going to be wonderful for the taxpayer, but it's going to cause a, a reduction in revenue. So I think we've got a lot to work on. Uh, I just wanted to throw that out there, we've got a lot to work on.
We sure do, which is why all the liaisons will be helping the departments to do this, so.
Right, and that, that was the other question. The other thing I wanted to make it very, very clear that the departments have a right to work with all of the liaisons or whichever liaison they want to work with. Or if they want to work with somebody who's not even their liaison, they have a right to be, do that. As well as any council member has a right to go to any department and say, I want to see what your projections are for your budgets. Because the liaison, that, that, that's wonderful, but it cannot be where each department can only talk to the liaison. They, they tried that once before and I made it very clear. Uh, that's not ever going to be allowed, so.
So nobody said that. Um, so I, I think the biggest thing is, and I'm going to bring us back to, because we kind of jumped a couple of hurdles here. Um, so it kind of wrangles us back in. One, um, yeah, we all as elected, seven of us can go to any department in the county and, and, and do all the things as the Good Book says, which strengthens us. Um, so we, we can do that. The other thing is, we are also assigned liaisons. And let me just make it be clear, like, the role and the duty of the liaison is to be the gateway between our office and that particular department. We are not advocating every yes, yes, yes for every single department um, that we are liaisons for. And it also um, helps as good stewards of the county to actually have that working relationship. We might not always, in your words, uh, Counselor Hawke, we all might not agree to uh, everything, but we all still have to work together because at the end of the day, the day got to end. And at the end of the day, we all are fiscal body members and we all have to answer um, to all of that. So while I understand your sentiment, I definitely disagree. Um, that, you know, because I'm pretty sure there are departments that probably don't want to work with some of the liaisons they have been assigned, and that's not going to fly, period. I think we can have the disagreements. I think people aren't trying to do ill will or malicious intent when they are trying to look at the different types of things that are coming forth. They are trying to get a better understanding. And we can all be grown adults and work with each other, even when we have healthy disagreements. So to bring it back to the main point before we got back to the letter, I just want to make sure that, just kind of looking to council here, are, does anybody else have any questions related to the 3% that is on, that's to the topic ahead of you?
Right. 3%. Anybody got any objections?
I, I have another statement. We, we know that the flat, a, a flat raise benefits the lower income, uh, lower salary person more than the percent. So do we intend to have a conversation about that now before the letter goes out? Or are you going to just leave it at 3%?
Um, I think the role is to just leave it at 3%.
I, I would like to know how the council feels. If you want to do the flat, then I know how to prepare the grids. If you want to do the 3%, I know to how to, I know how to prepare the grids because when that letter goes out, I need to start working on that because I've got forms and everything with regards to Form 144 that has to be completed by departments and they will need that salary information.
And the flat again helps our part-time people. Is that?
Pardon?
Let me, is it, no.
Helps the lower more.
Yeah, the lower ones.
The lower paid staff get a bigger percentage.
That's right. It, it helps them.
I, that's, sorry, that's exactly what I was going for.
And I think in, you know, my previous experience, it creates what was commonly called some wage, wage equity issues, right? So now you've got the lower people coming up, the lower, the higher people maybe not getting as much closer. So what does that mean?
What WIS calls a compression between the classifications.
Wage compression.
Yeah. So I say, we haven't done it for a few years, a flat rate, other than you did give the comic classification, they got a percentage, plus then they got an additional um, amount on the hour. So I just need to know how you want me to move forward. Counselor Iverson.
There was, and I've slipped since then, a fiscal analysis comparing the two. A flat at two dollars and twenty-six cents and three percent. I don't remember where it is, but I remember maybe seeing it, oh my gosh, yep, okay. Let's talk offline about it. There was a fiscal analysis done, uh, between the two and that would be helpful to think about for the next conversation in terms of COLA. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I kind of remember that, I'll have to go dig for it.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So without any, and all of this is subject to change, like we, this is a general start. But we could get to budget and realize this is not the way that we're going and, and we can change it. Uh, but this gives a general idea in the departments because it's that season where we have to start thinking about that, um, to really start moving forward. So I would like to say to council, if there's no objections, that we move forward with the three percent.
Bless you, um, three percent flat rate.
Okay, either three percent or go with the flat rate.
Oh, I'm sorry, flat, that's what I meant to say. It is late and I'm losing my voice, so I meant to say flat.
S- suggesting, what's the, what's that amount right there that I can't?
Two twenty-eight.
Two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
For everybody.
Raise for every employee.
No matter what they're making now. So now we're increasing the wage compression, is that right? That's, that's what's going to happen.
I, I in principle typically argue for the flat rate. Um, although I have come to recognize Ms. Shell's pain in the whole making the grid work with that, but.
Yeah, I'm not thinking about the grid.
Yeah, um. I, I mean, we're, we can always change it later, but.
This is a base to get staff and departments going.
Say that again, I missed it.
Yeah, I mean, I, you're doing a different, you're doing a very different approach and you know what? I think we should give it a chance, so we'll go with that.
Any else? Well, unfortunately I have a long history of arguing the other way, so I won't be able to support that.
So how do we proceed since there is an objection?
I think we will need to do a vote.
Okay.
So your, your recommendation would be a flat rate, so I need a motion for that.
Point of information before we move to vote, do we have a, a, a total amount that that would be for the county employees, some like?
No, because I don't know, I don't know.
Flat rate times eight hundred, times forty a week, times, okay, even a ballpark?
Nope, I haven't done it.
Okay.
Is there a problem with waiting until next time when we can get the data?
I think delay the letter, I mean.
Okay.
We normally get the president's letter out now, which gives the departments the couple of weeks in order to start because I've got forms that need to start going out at the end of the month. And those are budget forms that are required, so. That's why we do it now, so.
Anybody want to make a move? Um.
Do I move that we table this item until our next meeting?
Second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to table this to the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting. Um, any other comments? Please no. Okay. We're making it, so we're about to get to the roll call vote, so let us go to the roll call vote, please.
This is a motion to table the COLA amount decision to the May twenty-seventh meeting. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard? Counsel, Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
No.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, um, so we will wait and we'll just go from there. All right, um, we are now at item fourteen, which is, uh, from the legal department.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, re-adopting procedures for awarding community service grants.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion and second, Mr. Turner King.
So this ordinance, um, so to kind of set the background of why there might be a need to amend this ordinance. For the first time, we have eleven applicants for the vacant citizen, um, position on Sophia Travis. And so since we're in this very great but uncanny situation, um, we don't really have a procedure for selecting between those eleven applicants. We usually have one person and that's our person.
Interviews.
In the past, we have?
Yeah, I did them. Have eleven people, I'm not saying that, but that's, that's an abundance for sure.
So, not knowing that information, we did talk about this at Sophia Travis and, um, the committee uh, was making some recommendations in regards to changing this ordinance and so that's what this is. The first part of this ordinance is, I went through and, um, for consistency purpose, purposes and my own sanity, I, um, refer to the county council as county council consistently. Um, and then it, um, says that once this ordinance is adopted, all prior ordinances or resolutions pertaining to Sophia Travis, um, are replaced by this one. I've encompassed all the language from those prior resolutions, it's just easier to have one document and not look for four or five. Um, so the first creation is from the prior, um, documents. The program name history is from prior documents. When we get down to memberships in terms of, uh, terms of for the review committee, this is where the real conversation happened on May ninth with Sophia Travis. So I've clarified that it consists of five members, three of which are from council and that they're appointed during the organizational meeting that occurs at the beginning of each year. Two members are from community at large. And, um, I took out the language regarding that terms begin on January first and December thirty-first and I replaced it, um, that the term will be from the time of appointment by the county council until the replacement is named by the county council. So this creates a holdover situation for citizens, um, so that we don't have the situation where we have a vacancy. Um, but I also clarify that no community member shall be appointed for a second consecutive terms and term shall be for two years or until the replacement is appointed. In essence, what the language is doing is you are held over until you're, uh, vacant, until you are replaced, but you cannot participate in grant allocation for more than two years. Cause the vacancy is always going to be replaced before the third year, so to speak, of vac, um, grant allocation. Um, and then it adopts a process for which, uh, the community member should be, um, selected. So community members must submit an application prior to the deadline established by the review committee. Um, it indicates that applications will not be held over from one grant cycle to the next. So if you're an interested citizen, you do have to apply each year. Um, in the event that more than one community member applies, the president of the county council will select three volunteers from the county council to conduct interviews of the applicants. The committee identified, um, some criteria that they would want to be considered when interviewing the applicants and that's experiencing, experience working with community service agencies, grant writing, the availability for, um, to attend the meetings. And if the applicant has any conflicts of interest that are known, there's some situations where they won't, it won't be known. And then it indicates that if we just have one applicant that we don't have, they, they may not, they may, a discussion may occur at council without an interview. Um. And then section four didn't really change, it's the, um, duties of the review committee. Section five does change a little bit, it's application guidelines, so the real big change is at the end, which, um, it says the review committee will evaluate the applicants for grant funding. Um, most of this criteria was already in prior resolutions. The only big change is this last one where it says, it should be noted that if an agency received a grant through Sophia Travis and has not submitted all the required reports for the previous great years, the agency will be ineligible to apply for grant funding until all reports requirements are met. Um, we are still tracking some agencies down for reporting from two, three years ago. And so we are trying to solve that problem.
That was, that was not written in a resolution already?
It said may not be eligible. And so we're strengthening the language to change it so that you will not be eligible, it's not an option. Um, and then it adds language that I thought was in prior resolutions, but isn't, but it's also just for, um, mainly public knowledge that even after the council does the grant allocation, there's still one more step, which is the execution of the contracts with the commissioners. And that's all the changes that I ran through really fast, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Does any council member have any questions for Ms. Turner King? Counsel. David's got his hand up.
Yes, Counsel Henry.
Thank you, Madam President, um, thank you, Ms. Turner King for the edits here. So the, the criteria, the four criteria, one is the kind of declaration of conflicts of interest, how are we defining that?
There is a state statute that defines conflict of interest and so unless the committee or council wants to adopt something more stringent, that's the definition that I would use.
So someone related to say a recipient in the past or an applicant?
I'd have to look at the, um, statute.
Okay. Am I okay with statute or maybe clarifying that, you know, if someone is related to an applicant or recipient that we should?
I think the idea that was discussed in committee, um, was that a conflict of interest wouldn't necessarily, um, eliminate you for consideration for on the committee. It would just, it would be a process similar to what we do with opioid, which we're working through too. Um, because of the way this, uh, vote is structured in committee, it's not like each agency's award amount is voted on individually. So if Beacon requested five thousand dollars and someone had a conflict, it's not like they could just recuse themselves from that vote. It's one fluid vote and the money is allocated within. And so the idea would be that applicants should disclose conflicts upfront. And then when the council receives the resolution allocating funds along with that resolution would be a document saying, you know, member A has the following conflicts, member B has the following conflicts and it would be for council to determine how those conflicts factor into the grant allocation.
That's helpful, um, I just have two other short questions. So I, I, this is really great because I know with other boards and commissions in the county, we don't have this level of detail, uh, so this is a huge step forward. Um, I, I guess, is there value in placing language that would hope to aspire to diversifying the committee a bit? Um, you know, it's, I, I happen to serve on a body in this county where I'm the youngest person on it, um, which I find hilarious. Um, yeah, but I, is there, is there value in putting some language in here, um, striving for some diversity in our appointment process and is there a risk in doing so?
That was one of the criterion, the criteria that we used when we were choosing folks was to try to diversify, um, the demographic makeup of the committee.
Is that, did I miss it in here?
It's not in there.
No, it's not.
The only four criteria that I included was the ones discussed at the, um, Sophia Travis grant meeting. Um, however, it does indicate that those evaluation of applicants are not limited to those four. So I guess it would be up for the two, the three volunteers selected to conduct the interviews.
My, my last comment or question would be, um, we, we seem to leave the, the, the way the, 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 the account line is funded kind of opaque, right? That we're not trying to define a fixed amount or a percentage from a fund at this point. Is that by design not to define how we fund the community service grant?
I don't think the resolution itself talks about how the grant fund, um, is funded. I think that just comes up during budget conversations, so there's no amount or mechanism, um, established in this reso- ordinance on how, uh, what funding is devoted to this program.
Thank you. Uh, the, a boards and commissions liaison hasn't been selected, uh, to do kind of the interview process for some of these, uh, larger bodies. Uh, would that be something be done in this document or separately?
I think that if the council wanted to appoint a boards and, um, commissions liaison, they would do it separately. This document does call for three volunteers, so, um, procedurally, I think what would happen would be that the president request volunteers and then if three people volunteer, those are our three people. And then if four people volunteer, then the president would select three people.
Got it, thanks.
On that conflict of interest portion, uh, the way you described it, Ms. Turner King, doesn't really reflect what I thought came out of the subcommittee meeting and I don't mean that disrespectfully, but that sounds like an incredibly involved process where you or someone is going to have to be the town crier on, this is little Trent Deckard, he's likes Rotary Club and this is blah, blah, blah. He once met a, uh, a Red Cross volunteer that really inspired him. I, I, I just, that part sounds.
For opioid, just a form provided to each member and it says, do you have conflicts? Please list below. And then I give that form to the commissioners.
Okay, but it's not, it's not, we're in here voting on, so, so it sounded like we were in here voting on Sophia Travis and we're calling out Planned Parenthood, Area Ten and such and such has a conflict on this, 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 that's not what you're saying, right?
I don't think, I, um, I envisioned it, I think it's just that council would receive the information of, about any identified conflicts on the committee. Um, so that they can take that into consideration when they make the grant funding.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Ms. Turner King?
No, there aren't any dates in here, which is good, I think, because that seems to have, have been, it changes a lot. Um, this might be ridiculous, but, um, when I look at the criteria, there's no indication of which, what's positive, like versus negative. So like, you have one, there's a conflict of interest, that's a, I'm assuming you don't want that. But experience working with or for community service agencies, you do want. Um, so I guess, maybe it's inherent and that's not necessary, but that's, it just sticks out to me as it's not.
I, I also, um, maybe deliberately didn't, um, indicate positive versus negative because there's a conversation on, any of the committee members can correct me if I'm wrong, that a conflict of interest wouldn't necessarily be used to disqualify a candidate. So I don't know how to qualify that as what, a positive or a negative.
Okay, okay, so maybe it's considering the following, because, okay. I actually wanted to go back to the diversity thing because I get that it doesn't have to be explicitly stated, but in the larger context in which we're operating, I think it maybe should be stated if it's a value that we want to enshrine in this committee. And I can tell you that Cheryl Munson, who ran this for years, um, as Sophia Travis's replacement on council, um, felt pretty strongly about trying to balance that. Whether or not it was suc- successful with one or two applicants, that's a whole other issue. But I would argue that adding that, if that's a value that's supported, would be nice.
Without doing further research on it, I am hesitant to add that language because I don't want to, uh, open us up to HR issues.
So sad that we have to say that, it is so sad that we have to say that.
All right, okay.
I got my job.
I know it is, but gosh.
Okay.
Um, anybody else for the greater good of this conversation have any questions or comments related? have any questions or comments related to this item? All right. Is there anybody that would, that's still awake and wants to make public comment? Please, please come forward to the lectern. If you're here in this building, run up the steps or take the elevator and come into the Nat U Hill Room and make public comment, or you can, raise your hand via Teams. And I don't see any, so it looks like we, can we do a voice vote? Because it looks like Counselor Hawke has left the building.
It's an ordinance, so I would suggest a roll call.
Okay, just, no, no, you're fine. So just trying to move us expeditiously. So can we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
No.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard? Motion passes 5 to 1. Sorry, it's too late to do that.
I am going to make a controversial statement, because I realize that we're like four hours into this meeting. But it would be beneficial, now that this ordinance is passed, to perhaps select volunteers to begin the interview process for the 11 applicants that we have waiting.
Counsel, raise your hands. Please do so if you want to. We got one, I need two more. Can I get a two? Can I get a two? Anybody, 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 anybody?
I nominate the members of the Sophia Travis committee.
My second.
I am going to say, I have to, I'm taking myself out of the running with that one, because there are quite a few applicants that I, I know on there, and I, I don't want to be a part of that.
Yeah, I think I have the same problem. I mean, having been in the social service world for a long time, I'm...
I know everyone in Bloomington and I still want to do it.
I mean, I think we're all fairly involved. I, I'm surprised there's...
We've all got conflicts of interest.
We've got.
Right.
Okay, so... Anybody, I think we broke Dave Askins too.
In some ways, I think it would be nice to have someone other than the Sophia Travis committee. I think that would give it a whole even bigger perspective in getting someone to serve that would, and then there would be like, you know, several.
Been too busy.
I'm happy to not do it.
I, I will, I will throw my name out there, so not...
I think we could maybe hold off on this conversation, because it just dawned on me that's an ordinance and it didn't pass unanimously. And so there has to be a second reading.
Well, that's good, thank you, Ms. Turner.
Okay, well, we will...
You're welcome. So everyone think about who wants to volunteer, and we'll revisit this.
Seriously think about it, so we can come back. So, give me a second. So we will go on to, you can, I'm the one that got to drop three hours. Item B.
I'm doing it for you, I'm doing it for you.
So this will be presented again at the May 27th meeting, and so hopefully by then we'll have some volunteers.
This is the last item, people. Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2025-25, allowing amendments to my sister's closet Sophia Travis Community Services grant application.
Got a motion and definite second.
May 9th meeting, my sister's closet had presented a request that was previously expressed to council office. My sister's closet applied during the 2024 grant cycle for a collaborative project. And we didn't have that many collaborative projects, and it's kind of a newer thing to the Sophia Travis grants. What is required if you submit a collaborative project is that you also submit with application a memorandum of understanding between the collaborative partners. My sister's closet could not get an executed memorandum of understanding with their previously identified collaborative partner. And so they asked to be allowed to have, identify and or, and work with a different collaborative partner, which is going to be Amethyst House. This is kind of different than any other amendment to a Sophia Travis situation, because typically we're amending the memorandum of understanding, but we never got that far, because they didn't have the collaborative agency paperwork required. So this is in essence allowing them to amend their grant application to work with a different partner. And this was forwarded to council with a positive recommendation from Sophia Travis Committee. And so the next step would be if council approves the corresponding resolution, I would prepare a memorandum of understanding and then forward it to the commissioners so that my sister's closet can move forward with their project.
Any questions or comments from the peanut gallery?
I'd just say quickly, well discussed in Sophia Travis and well vetted at that time.
I appreciate that. And I was aware of the issue simply from talking with the applicant at one point, just at a social event. So no problem with this. Is the process for making this kind of amendment and having it be vetted by the committee and then come to council, is that part of the resolution? Is that in that resolution? Because it should be.
I don't think it is.
I think it's a great process that you all discussed it and you're, you know, asking, but I would throw that out there. All right.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, any public comment? You know what to do if you're here in the Nat U Hill Room. And you know what to do if you are on Teams. Please raise your hand. And seeing none, may I please have a roll call vote?
And just to clarify, the vote is to...
Approve Resolution 2025-25, allowing amendments to the my sister's closet Sophia Travis Community Services grant application.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Once we say yes to this, if we all choose to say yes to this, then this goes to the commissioners for a final approval and then it will go forth to the universe.
So not the same votes as an ordinance.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Sorry, I got myself messed up here.
We're all on the same boat.
I know. Okay, so Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
This also leads to the last item on the agenda, which is counselor liaison updates and comments. I would like to ask, please, if you have anything to say, please make it short and sweet.
No.
I'm just gonna say mine the next time.
Okay. The only thing that I was gonna say is, I think we need to, I'd like to have Counselor Iverson be a part of the MCPO board.
I completely accept and thank, we need to do some interviews for the public library. And so I've just been nominated and I accept.
All right, we got it. Anybody else have anything else to say?
Drive safely.
Thank you to the staff who look like you want to fall over and go to sleep. And with that being said, we are adjourned, thank you.